And she was working 60 hours a week, saving the lives of COVID patients. But after nearly two years, it was really cheerleading that brought them home.
Harper, let's go.
Dean yells up the stairs to her 12-year-old while blending a protein shake. They're on their way out the door to tumbling practice.
I didn't really have that many friends. I just, I miss it so much, being able to be surrounded by different people all the time.
Seventh grade Harper is the ultimate boss, Dean says.
And she's the one that says, no more traveling. I don't want to travel anymore. I want to go home. But that also puts me in a bind.
Many hospitals won't hire local travelers, even though they're hurting for nurses. They want RNs to accept full-time positions, and the hourly rates aren't even close to the $120 an hour or more that travelers make.
This makes me sound like I'm in it for the money, but essentially, I'm in it for what's best for my family.
She's the primary breadwinner, and she's applying at hospitals that are still employing hundreds of travelers. So Dean is holding out for an acceptable offer. Parth Bhakta is the CEO of Vivian Health, which posts travel nursing jobs. The company is also helping some hospitals find a way to get out of relying so much on temporary staff, especially since staffing agencies tack on 50% or more.
You're caught kind of between a rock and a hard place here in terms of, you know, what do you do in this situation? I think ultimately, health systems need to figure out how to retain their workers more, and ultimately, probably we have to pay and incentivize their existing staff more.
There are signing bonuses these days. Some hospitals are even trying out temporary positions that are almost like taking a travel contract, but they're still spending heavily on travelers, even as they ask regulators to investigate price gouging. The average pay bump last year for full-time nurses was only marginally more than usual, which is why pandemic travelers face such a difficult transition.
Come on, kiddo.
Sarah Dean offers some encouragement as her pre-teen perfects her back handspring. She's taking advantage of her time at home. Meanwhile, she's trying out something entirely different, working part-time at a spa near her house that offers rejuvenating IVs.
I have done nothing but death and dying for two years. It is refreshing to do preventative health.
Beyond how to pull back their nurses from traveling, hospitals are facing burnout like they've never seen. An estimated half million nurses are expected to leave the bedside entirely this year. For NPR News, I'm Blake Farmer in Nashville.
Okay, let's take a moment to address a question a lot of you are asking. Where's Robin? Our colleague and co-host, Robin Young. Robin, where art thou? Do we have you on the line?
Competing in the Olympics. The lose. No, actually.
From Beijing, Robin Young.
Like, half a million people, Scott, in a normal year. I had shoulder surgery and I'm rehabbing. It was a rotator cuff repair. It's fine, but the side effects are I can't sleep. And apparently, Dr. Holivax does not want me using heavy farm equipment or a microphone. Those are like directions. And I had one of those medical recliner chairs that stands you up and lowers you, but it malfunctioned. So it was like a Lucille Ball episode of like raising and lowering.
The adventures of Robin post-surgery.
Scott, I have to say, I am so grateful because when I've talked, you had a very serious shoulder surgery.
Yeah, we've talked about this. I mean, I understand shoulder surgery is part of the job description at this place. I had a shoulder operation, a big one, about three decades ago. You and I know how remarkable modern medicine is. And the good news for you is you were able to get your shoulder fixed during this pandemic medical craziness.
This is true. In 2020, it was estimated that well over 28 million elective surgeries would be postponed that year alone. And now it's 2022. Yes, you know, we know Omicron may be waning, but we also know hospitals.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for February the 7th, 2022 is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Bespin?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And I call him as president. Thank you. This afternoon, our invocation will be delivered by Elder Milton Hardy Jr., who is the Associate Pastor of Greater Prior Temple Church here in our city. And following his invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we get started, I want to ask you to stand, and we want to have a moment of silence for two citizens in our community who have just recently passed. Ms. Estelle McAtton died on January 30, 2022. And many of you know Estelle. She was a longtime neighborhood advocate in our city, and she was founder of the Virginia Statewide Neighborhood Conference. And also, she was a leader in neighborhood work nationally. And more than that, Estelle was our 20,008 Citizen of the Year. And so we remiss her. I also want to recognize Rebecca Gail Burris, who passed away on January 21, 2022. Gail, as she was affectionately known, served as a commissioner on the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority since 2006, and she worked in social services for over 30 years. Gail was well-known in our community. I worked with her personally on programs such as the drug court and the criminal justice system. And she served this, in her capacity, she served this city as an advocate and an activist for those who needed help. And so, and she did that practically, practically her entire life. So throw me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, Pastor Hardy.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we just thank you for one more day, one more day that we can just get up and lift up our hands and say thank you. Thank you for breathing our bodies. Thank you for the air that we breathe on every day. Oh God, we realize that there's so many things pressing against our city and our government. Oh God, senseless violence every day, people just dying all around us. But oh God, we ask you to give us the strength and the courage and the wisdom to do the right things by each other every day, God. We ask you to do these things, God. Bless our city officials, every decision that they make on today, everybody that's representing here on today, our police officers, our sheriffs, our health departments, everybody that's working in our governments, God. We ask you to bless them and make the right decisions on a day, on a daily basis. Oh God, bless our citizens. Oh God, we deal with grief just about every day. We deal with death just about every day. But oh God, we still know that you're great, and we still know that you're kind. We ask you to bless this session on today. Blessed in the mighty way, God. We ask you to be seen, and oh God, show how great you are. We ask for all these things. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen. And amen.
Praise the Lord. We worship the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hardy, and thank all of you for joining us today. This is our, well, second time we're coming together to meet. We're at a briefing this morning, and today, this afternoon, we will come together to take care of the city's business. Let me say that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. The announcements for the city of Roanoke is as follows. The city is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. The Board of Zoning Appeals, there's one vacancy. The Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, one vacancy. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two vacancies. Roanoke Arts Commission, one vacancy. Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, one vacancy. Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, one vacancy. The Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, one vacancy. The Touring Advisory Board, one vacancy. Which would be, should be, a citizen at large. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, one vacancy. Western Virginia's Regional Industrial Facility Authority, one vacancy. And for all of these vacancies, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application. And let me say, on behalf of council, we welcome your applications to serve on any of our boards and commissions. We need your assistance as we go forward in governing this city. So please, take advantage of this. You can contact the clerk's office. They'll guide you through the process. It's a very simple process. And so we look forward to hearing from you who would like to serve your city. The clerk's office is also accepting applications for two upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office expiring on June 30, 2022. Three terms of office will commence on July 1, 2022, and end on June 30, 2025. Incumbent School Board trustees are Letheria H. Smith and Joyce W. Watkins. Applications and information describing the duties and responsibilities of trustees of the Roanoke City School Board are available on the city of Roanoke's webpage at www.roanokeva.gov, or they may be obtained by contacting the city's clerk's office at room 456 here in the North Sea Taylor Municipal Building, which is located at 215 Church Avenue, Southwest, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The deadline to receive applications is Thursday, March 10 at 5:00 PM. Now let me repeat that. Thursday, March 10 at 5:00 PM, your application must be in the clerk's office to be considered for these two school board trustee positions. And so again, please contact the city's clerk's office for information. You can reach them at 540-853-2541, or by email at clerk@roanokeva.gov. So please take advantage of those opportunities. All right, I'm going to come down to the podium now, because it's time for us to recognize our most valuable asset, and that is our employees. And so we're going to recognize those employees. So I'm going to come down and I'm hoping that there comes a deputy.
What? Let's see if you're well.
Now, when you all come, come with a smile on your face now, so people recognize you as Joyce, working for the great Star City. In recognition with the governor's instructions with regards to large gatherings, city council cannot host a recognition breakfast that we used to do. We love that. We love to do that. But we can't do it this year, but acknowledge, we will acknowledge your outstanding service to the citizens of the city of Roanoke with gifts that will be distributed by our clerk's office. And I'm proud to say that Deputy Clerk Webb is here to hand those gifts out. All right, we'll recognize city employees who achieved a milestone of 30, 35, 40, and 45 years of service in the year 2021. They'll be recognized this afternoon. And as it is, sometimes people have conflicts. They're not going to all be here, but we're going to call out those names that we understand are here this afternoon. And I will call out the name of each employee and the department they represent. So thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Roanoke. And let me start with at 35 years. Four. Oh, it's on another sheet, okay. The 45 years, and I'm going to just call a name. I don't think she's here today, but Karen Kimbrough, Department of Social and Human And we're so proud of that. And that's a 45 years. Let's give her a hand for 45 years. All right. Do I have that off Karen Kimbrough?
It's the key. She, that's what she has. So I have it over here, but I didn't know if you wanted to read it or you don't have to.
Okay, let me read, let me read that key. I think that's important. We're going to present her with a Heisman Award. She's not here, but I want to read this to you anyway. I think that's important. "In recognition of Karen M. Kimbrough, Family Services Specialist of the City of Roanoke, having served as a public servant for approximately 45 years, assuring the well-being and care of citizens in the city of Roanoke. And this is presented by Mayor Sherman Lee Sr. and the members of Roanoke City Council on February the 7, 2022." So Karen M. Kimbrough. Let's give her another hand. And we will get that to her. All right. Our next representative is 35 years. Well, let me, hit me up. 40 years. All right, this is.
Right here, this where you are. And then you have the proclamation.
Okay. 40 years, and this person is no stranger to city government and property, not a stranger to anybody in this city, and is our treasurer, Ms. Evelyn Powers. Come on up, Evelyn. I got some things for you, but thank you for your.
Just remember, I was only 13 when I came here.
You don't know. Tell me, Evelyn, she was only 13 when she came here. But it's my honor to, to recognize Evelyn, and I know so much, so many things about her and the things that she did that we can't put in, in the proclamation or in an award, but I've known Evelyn to help people do what they need to do, those that didn't have it. See, and those are the kinds of things that, that you don't read about, that go unnoticed. But as a servant in our city, I've seen her help people making ends meet and help them with their taxes and extending some things. So you have to be a caring person to do that. And that's what makes me proud to be the mayor of the city, because we have these type of employees that work for us. And Evelyn, I got a proclamation I want to read to you. The Honorable Evelyn W. Powers began her career with the city of Roanoke in 1981 as an administrative assistant in the municipal auditing department. After nearly 23 years in municipal auditing, Ms. Powers sought the position of city treasurer and was appointed by city council on January 1, 2004. To finish the remainder of the term left vacant by retirement, and in November of 2004, she was elected as the first female to hold the position of treasurer for the city of Roanoke. Whereas, as city treasurer, Ms. Powers established a close working relationship between the city treasurer's office, city administration, city council, and all city departments. She took the required courses through the University of Virginia's Well Done Cooper Center for Public Service, and on November 15, 2007, she received her master's government treasurer certification. And under her tenure, the treasurer's office has also received and maintained accreditation. Whereas, she was, has worked diligently to provide new service, such as DMV Select, and soon to be implemented, a robust new tax and treasury system that combines seven legacy systems into one central application that includes one-line bill presentment and payment options. And that's going to be great when I saw it. And whereas Ms. Powers is married to Thomas Powers and is a proud mother of three children and grandmother of six, and enjoys spending time with her family sewing, crafting, gardening, and reading. And that's a lot of time there. That's great. Whereas Ms. Powers is, is now therefore I Sherman P. Lee Sr., Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia. In recognition of 40 years of outstanding service to the citizens of the city of Roanoke, due hereby proclaim Monday, February 7, throughout this great seven-time All-American City, as the Honorable Evelyn Powers Day. Evelyn, congratulations. Thank you. And you have the award there.
It's been an honor to work here that long.
Well, you say that, you form state, you might say that.
It's been an honor to work for the city of Roanoke for the last 40 years, and I look forward to a few more. Thank you very much. This means a lot to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, also with 40 years is Captain Craig Sellers, Fire and EMS. Is Captain Sellers here? Is Captain Sellers here? Let's give him a hand as he comes, brother. And let me tell you folks, and those that are viewing and citizens here, these people are some very important people in our lives. And Captain, I want to thank you for forty years of outstanding service. I have a proclamation I want to read. Captain Craig Sellers began his career with the city of Roanoke in November nineteen eighty-one as a firefighter. In nineteen eighty-seven, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, and at that time, he had the distinction of being the youngest person promoted to lieutenant in both age and years of service. Whereas in nineteen ninety-nine, Lieutenant Sellers was promoted to the rank of First Lieutenant, and on twenty oh one, to the rank of captain. And spent the first seventeen years of his career working at Historic Station Number One, and is currently assigned to the new Fire EMS Station Seven on Memorial Avenue. Whereas Captain Sellers is also the longest-tenured employee in the department and the longest-serving employee of the department's Apparatus Design Committee. His leadership on this committee has helped design close to thirty pieces of fire apparatus. He has two sons, Craig Junior and Andrew, who also work for the department as firefighters, paramedics. And that's great to have a family there. All right, guys, come on up here with your fathers. And we're so, so honored, Captain, that you've served Roanoke so well. Whereas Captain Sellers will be honored for forty years of outstanding service to the city of Roanoke's Fire and EMS Department and citizens of Roanoke at the Monday, February the seventh, two o'clock PM meeting of Roanoke City Council. So now therefore I Sherman P. Lee Senior, Mayor of the city of Roanoke, Virginia, in recognition of his many years of dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city of Roanoke, do hereby proclaim Monday, February the seventh, throughout this great seven-time All-American City, as Captain Craig Sellers Day. Congratulations. If you want to say a few words, you got that option.
Thank you very much. The only thing I can say is, is really been a, people ask me how long I've, how I've stayed around so long, I've just been surrounded by so many great people and really good people to work with, make my job easy. I'm really proud to have been here all this time, and I got a few more years in me.
All right, thank you. All right, we got the thirty-five years now, and I want to recognize Mr. Eddie Bobbitt of Transportation, you see here? Okay. Donna St. Clair, Facilities Management, is Donna here? Come on up, Donna. Thank you. Let me just say, in recognition of thirty-five years of outstanding and dedicated service to the city of Roanoke, and Mayor Sherman Lee Senior and members of the Roanoke City Council want to congratulate you, Donna, for your years of dedicated service. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right?
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thirty years of service now. Michael Elmore, Human and Social Services, is Michael here? Thank you, Michael. Michael Elmore, for thirty years of outstanding and dedicated service to the city of Roanoke and the Mayor Sherman Lee Senior and members of Roanoke City Council, on this date, February the seventh, twenty twenty-two, thank you for your dedicated and commitment to Roanoke City.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy Shirley. Let's give Captain a hand as she comes. We're presenting this to Kathy Shirley for thirty years of outstanding and dedicated service to the citizens of Roanoke, Virginia, given by Mayor Sherman P. Lee and members of Roanoke City Council, February the seventh, twenty twenty-two. And by the way, you all can see this, we run it, as you heard me say earlier, so take a look at yourself on camera. Thank you, Kathy, let's give her a hand. Kenneth Shelton, is Kenneth here? Okay. Kenneth served thus as retired Fire and EMS employee. And Brian, right, is Brian here? All right, Brian is also retired Fire EMS citizen. So these are our citizens, and let's give them, let me, before I do that, I want to ask council if they got anything they want to say to these award recipients that served your city for so long. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm grateful for the opportunity just to thank them personally for their service to this city. Like you said, they are the most important people in this room, and they are the people who help keep this city running, and so I just say thank you for your service. And hopefully you're looking at retirement soon, some of you. No, no, everybody shaking hands. Well, thank you so much for your service.
All right, all right, let's give our employees a hand. You're going to all have to get back to work.
Nobody was retired.
All right, we're now down to the, out of number three, which is hearing of citizens upon public matters. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens signed up?
No citizens signed up.
Okay, all right. All right, we're now down to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Approve the consent agenda.
Sir.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call the other please?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Item number C one is minutes of the regular meeting of city council held on Monday, January the third, twenty twenty-two. The recommended action is to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve as recorded. Do we need a voice vote on it, or just approve it as recorded?
It's already approved in the consent agenda.
All right, let me find where that is, yeah, all right. All right. A communication from the city. Why is this? Why is this in my phone? Okay, I understand. All right, item number five is a regular hearing, we have none. Item number six is petitions and communications, none. And item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of city manager. And I will call on the city manager to introduce a briefing that we have regarding Roanoke Prevention Alliance Youth Risk Behavior Study.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and we have two briefings that will be coming up that, though not originally designed to be on the same meeting, probably as timely that they are in light of all that is going on in our community and across our country as well. The first is actually from the Roanoke Prevention Alliance, and you will recall that from time to time, they conduct a survey and other assessments of area youth regarding risky behavior, and will come and report those findings as they do to the school division, board, also to you as well, and they're here to do that today. And then that will be followed by the Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment and the presentation by the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, or at least a portion of the, of the commission as well. So at this point, I would like to ask the folks from the Prevention Alliance up, and then they will lead you through the presentation. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to speak to you guys today. So I'm Mackenzie Chipwood from Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, and this is Christine Gis. And we are with, as we already mentioned, Roanoke Prevention Alliance. So today we're presenting the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey, which includes the grade sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth in Roanoke City public schools. The total number of students surveyed was one thousand seven hundred and sixteen, with middle school being one thousand and nine, and high school being seven hundred and seven. So the questions asked were related to substance use, perceptions about substance use, suicide, sexual activity, healthy behaviors like exercising, eating healthy, and eating habits. So questions about, we also did questions about youth experience with adverse childhood experiences and trauma. So before we begin, does anybody have any questions? And at any point, feel free to stop us while we're presenting in order to ask us questions. All right, so first we're going to start with middle school data, so thirty-day substance use. So how this works is it'll come up substance by substance, and so I'll just go right into it. So for tobacco, in two thousand and eleven, we started at seven percent, and then in two thousand and seventeen, it's four percent, two thousand and nineteen, three percent, and then twenty twenty-one, two percent. So this is an overall decrease of seventy-one percent. So any questions on how this will work? Because I'll kind of go through it pretty quick. Okay. Next is vaping, so we didn't ask about vaping until two thousand and fifteen. So in two thousand and fifteen, we started at fourteen percent, and then in two thousand and seventeen, we decreased to nine percent. Two thousand and nineteen, we had an increase to thirteen percent, and then twenty twenty-one, we had a decrease to eight percent. So here you'll see a kind of roller coaster, but we have overall had a forty-three percent decrease.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what number of students are you using for your, for your figures, your sampling?
This is middle school, sixth and eighth, so this total is one thousand and nine.
One thousand and nine, okay, thank you.
And then we'll move on to alcohol. In two thousand and eleven, it was seventeen percent, and in twenty twenty-one, we decreased to six percent with an overall decrease of sixty-five percent. And then for alcohol binge, in two thousand and eleven, we started at eleven percent, and in twenty twenty-one, decreased to two percent with an overall decrease of eighty-two percent. And for marijuana, in two thousand and eleven, was fourteen percent, and in twenty twenty-one, decreased to five percent. And here we want to say that based on legalization and perceptions of marijuana with our youth, we expected this number to increase, but we just want to say how proud we are of our youth in Roanoke City, that they are continuing the patterns of decreasing and not using marijuana. And then prescriptions, here, we didn't ask the question until two thousand and thirteen. So in two thousand and thirteen, we started at sixteen percent and decreased in twenty twenty-one to two percent with an overall decrease of eighty-eight percent. And then the last one, the last one for middle school was heroin, and we asked this, we started asking this in two thousand and seventeen at six percent, and then in twenty twenty-one, one percent with an overall decrease of eighty-three percent. And next we'll go into high school, and then this is tenth and twelfth, and these numbers here are seven hundred and seven. So it's the same layout as middle school, so I'll just get into it. So for tobacco, in two thousand and eleven, we started at seventeen percent, and then in twenty twenty-one, we decreased to two percent with an overall decrease of eighty-eight percent. And then for vape, again here, we didn't ask the question until two thousand and fifteen. So in two thousand and fifteen, we started at thirty-one percent, and in two thousand and seventeen, decreased to twenty percent, and twenty nineteen went back up to thirty-two percent, and then twenty twenty-one, decreased to eighteen percent. So here again, you'll see that roller coaster, but we have overall decrease of forty-two percent. And then for alcohol, in two thousand and eleven, we started at thirty-five percent and had a decrease of fifteen percent with an overall decrease of fifty-seven percent. And then for alcohol binge, in two thousand and eleven, we started at twenty percent, and then in twenty twenty-one, we decreased to six percent with an overall decrease of seventy percent. And then for marijuana, in two thousand and eleven, we started at thirty-two, thirty-one percent, and then in twenty twenty-one, we had a decrease of sixteen percent. And again here, this is still a drug of concern for Roanoke City, as it does, it is a demotivator and makes learning harder, so with it becoming recreational legal, we still want to keep it on the radar. And then for prescription, here again, we didn't ask until two thousand and thirteen. So in two thousand and thirteen, we had fifteen percent, and then twenty twenty-one, two percent with an overall decrease of eighty-seven percent. And then for heroin, again here, two thousand and seventeen, fifteen percent, and then in twenty twenty-one, we decreased to two percent with an overall decrease of eighty-seven percent. And then just to sum it up, vape products are being used more than traditional tobacco products, thirty-day marijuana and alcohol use for high school are at fifteen and sixteen percent, and then prescription abuse has decreased, and so has heroin use. So now on the next slides, I'm going to share some of the factors that may increase the risk of youth using drugs. So in twenty twenty-one was the first year that we asked adverse childhood experience, experiences questions. These questions are related to experiences that can and most often but not always cause traumatic responses in youth. We know that from CDC research on adverse childhood experiences, that childhood experiences can and do affect adult decision-making related to health and life outcomes in the future. So let me pause here with all the data before, does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Do you have data regarding ethnicities?
Ethnicities? It's not been run that way, so. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
How many students were surveyed?
How many students were surveyed in total?
Yes.
One thousand seven hundred and sixteen. Did you need it break, broken down into middle school and high school?
Yes.
And then for middle school, we had one thousand and nine, and then for high school, we had seven hundred and seven. You're welcome. No, you're fine. It's a bunch of numbers coming at you really fast. Okay, so for adverse childhood experiences, so percentage of youth that report a parent or other adult in the home swearing at them, insulting them, or putting them down, or repeatedly, for middle school, we had about ten percent, and then for high school, we had seventeen, about seventeen percent. And then percentage of youth who report a parent or adult in their home hit, kicked, or physically hurt them, for middle school, we had about three percent, and for high school, we had about four percent. And then percentage of youth who indicate that they are afraid of getting hurt by someone in their home, often or always, we only asked this in high school, and that was about three percent. And then percentage of youth who indicate that an adult or relative friend or stranger who was at least five years older than them had ever touched them in a sexual way, or had them touch their body in a sexual way, for middle school, we had about seven percent, and high school, we had eleven percent. Percentage of youth who indicate that an adult or older relative friend or stranger who was at least five years older than them had attempted to have any type of sexual intercourse with them, for middle school, about five percent, and for high school, about five percent as well. Percentage of youth who indicated that their family did not have enough money to buy food or pay for housing, often or repeatedly, for middle school, about five percent, and then for high school, about seven percent. Percentage of youth who indicate that they had ever lived with someone who was an alcoholic, problem drinker, user of illegal drugs, took prescription drugs to get high, or was a problem. problem gambler, for middle school, about sixteen percent, for high school, twenty-two point four percent. Percentage of youth who indicate that they had ever lived with someone who was depressed, mentally ill, or suicidal, middle school, nineteen point one percent, for high school, about thirty percent. Percentage of youth who have, who have had someone in their household who has ever gone to jail or prison, for middle school, twenty-six point one percent, and high school, twenty-nine point four percent. Percentage of youth who have ever seen someone get shot, stabbed, or beaten in their neighborhood, for middle school, we had fifteen point six percent, and for high school, we had nineteen percent. Percentage of youth who report that they feel they are treated badly or unfairly because of their race or ethnicity, often or repeatedly, for middle school, nine point two percent, and for high school, fourteen point six percent. So, now, I'm going to move into protective factors. Any questions on the ACES, adverse childhood experience data? All right, so these are protective factor results. So, percentage of youth who report their family gives them help and support when they need it, often or repeatedly, for middle school, we had seven, about seventy-six percent, and for high school, sixty-seven point two percent. Percentage of youth who indicate that their family ate a meal together one or more times in the past seven days, middle school, eighty-three point seven, and high school, seventy-nine point six. Percentage of youth who report that when they are not at home, one of their parents knows where they are and who they are with, for middle school, we had about ninety-five percent, and same for high school. Percentage of youth who agree or strongly agree that they get a lot of encouragement at their school, for middle school, about sixty percent, for high school, about forty-six percent. Percentage of youth who agree or strongly agree that they feel they matter to their, to the people in their community, middle school, fifty-two point six, and for high school, forty-three percent. Percentage of youth who indicate that if they had an important question about their life, they know at least one adult, not including their parents, whom they feel comfortable going to for help. So, for middle school, we had eighty point four percent, and for high school, we had eighty point one percent. And then last, percentage of youth who indicate that they spend at least one hour a week helping others without getting paid, middle school, we had fifty-four point six percent, and for high school, we had forty-six point six percent. Any questions on those before I pass it over to Christine? Yes, ma'am.
Do you have it broken down in demographics?
I don't think so. No, ma'am.
You just did a over...
Yes, ma'am. An overall impact of Roanoke City.
This slide shows the results for high school tenth, twelfth grades, um, and it's focusing on the ACES, those adverse childhood experiences, also known as risk factors. Of those that ever lived with someone who was an alcoholic, problem drinker, user of illegal drugs, took prescription drugs to get high, or was a problem gambler, seventy-two point zero percent of youth felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year, whereas only forty-four point seven percent of youth who have not ever lived with someone who was an alcoholic, problem drinker, user of illegal drugs, took prescription drugs to get high, or was a problem gambler, felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year. Of those that had that ACE, thirty percent of youth used a vape product in the past thirty days, whereas only thirteen point nine percent of youth used a vape product if they had not had that experience. Twenty-six percent of youth that had that ACE, used alcohol in the past thirty days, compared to only ten point seven percent, um, that used alcohol in the past thirty days, when they did not experience that risk factor. Almost thirty-two percent of youth that experienced this risk factor used marijuana in the past thirty days, compared to ten percent for those that had not had that ACE. That's about two-thirds higher for those that experienced that adverse childhood experience. Seventy-seven percent of youth who have ever lived with someone who was depressed, mentally ill, or suicidal, have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year, whereas only thirty-five point nine percent of youth who have not ever lived with someone who was depressed, mentally ill, or suicidal, have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year. Twenty-six percent of youth that experienced that ACE, used a vape product in the past thirty days, compared to only fourteen percent of those that did not have that experience. Twenty-one percent of youth that had that ACE, used alcohol in the past thirty days, compared to only ten percent of those that had never had that risk factor. Twenty-eight percent of youth that had this ACE, used marijuana in the past thirty days, whereas only ten percent of those that had not had that experience, used marijuana in the past thirty days. Again, this is about two-thirds higher for those that have experienced that childhood, um, adverse childhood experience. Sixty-eight percent of youth who have had someone in their household go to jail or prison, have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year, whereas forty-four point four percent of youth who have not had someone in their household go to jail or prison, have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year. Twenty-six percent of youth with that ACE, used a vape product in the past thirty days, compared to only thirteen percent of those that had not had that experience. Nineteen percent of those that have experienced that risk factor, used alcohol in the past thirty days, compared to only eleven point six percent of those that did not have that experience. Twenty-five percent of youth that had that ACE, used marijuana in the past thirty days, compared to only eleven percent of youth that did not have that experience, used marijuana. Seventy point one percent of youth who have seen someone get shot, stabbed, or beaten in their neighborhood, have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year, whereas only forty-five point six percent of youth who have not ever experienced this, have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year. Almost twenty-eight percent of youth that have experienced that ACE, used a vape product in the past thirty days, compared to only fifteen percent of those that had not experienced that ACE. Twenty-three percent of youth that have had that ACE, used alcohol in the past thirty days, whereas only a twelve percent of youth who had not had that experience, used alcohol in the past thirty days. Thirty-one percent of youth that have experienced that ACE, used marijuana in the past thirty days, versus only eleven percent that have not had that experience, again, we see marijuana about two-thirds higher for those with that adverse childhood experience. So, for those that have experienced all four of the above ACES, seventy-five point nine percent have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year, compared to only twenty-nine point four percent of youth who have not ever experienced any of those four ACES, have felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more in a row during the past year. Forty-six percent of youth that experienced all four of these ACES, used a vape product in the past thirty days, compared to about eleven percent that did not have any of those ACES. Thirty-eight percent of youth that experienced all of these ACES, used alcohol in the past thirty days, compared to almost nine that did not experience any of those ACES. Fifty-five percent of youth that experienced all four ACES, used marijuana in the past thirty days, whereas only seven point five percent of youth that have not had these childhood experience, adverse childhood experiences, used marijuana in the past thirty days. Okay, for this slide, we are going to be focusing on the protective factors. Um, it's also reflecting the grades tenth and twelfth grade. For those who answer no to the question, they have more protective factors in their life. Um, this represents a view of how disconnected some of our youth are in our community. Fifty-one point seven percent of those that have ever lived with someone who was an alcoholic, problem gambler, user of illegal drugs, took prescription drugs to get high, or was a problem gambler, have family that gives them help and support, often or regularly, whereas seventy-two point nine percent of those that have not had, that have not experienced living with an alcoholic, problem drinker, user of illegal drugs, took prescription drugs to get high, or was a problem gambler, report they have family that gives them support and help when they need it, often or repeatedly. Twenty-eight percent of youth that have experienced this ACE, feel they matter in their community, compared to forty-nine percent that have not lived that experience. Of those that have ever lived with that ACE, seventy-three point two ate at least one meal together, and eighty-two point one that didn't experience this trauma, ate at least one meal together. Of those that ever lived with this experience, eighty-nine percent said their parents know where they are and who they are with. And ninety-six percent of those without this experience, report that their parents know where they are and who they are with. And seventy-eight point seven percent of those with this ACE, said they know at least one adult to go to for help that is not a parent, whereas eighty-two percent without this experience, said that they have at least one adult to go to for help. For the rest of these slides, in this format, we will focus on the first two protective factors, a family gives help and support, and that the youth feel that they matter to the people in their community, because the other protective factors are very close in percentages. Fifty-two point eight percent of those that have ever lived with someone who was depressed, mentally ill, or suicidal, have family that gives them help and support, often or regularly, whereas seventy-six point nine percent of those that have not experienced living with someone who was depressed, mentally ill, or suicidal, report they have family that gives them support and help when they need it, often or repeatedly. Almost twenty-seven percent of those that have experienced this ACE, feel they matter in their community, whereas fifty-five percent of youth that have not had this ACE, feel that they matter to people in their community. This means that we can and we should focus on ways to provide youth that have experienced mental illness and their families, more family support, and help them feel that they matter to people in their community. Fifty-nine point two percent of those that have someone in their household that has gone to jail or prison, have family that gives them help and support, often or regularly, whereas seventy-one point six percent of those that have not experienced someone being in prison or jail, report they have family that gives them support and helps when they need it, often or repeatedly. Almost thirty per, thirty-six percent of youth that have experienced that ACE, feel they matter to people in their community, compared to forty-seven that have not had this experience. Sixty point eight percent of those that have seen someone shot, stabbed, or beaten in their neighborhood, have family that gives them help and support, often or regularly, whereas seventy point four percent of those that have seen someone shot, stabbed, or beaten in their neighborhood, report they have family that gives them support and help when they need it, often or repeatedly. Thirty percent of youth that had this ACE, feel they matter in their community, whereas forty-eight percent of youth that have not experienced, feel that they matter in their community. So, for those that have experienced all four of these ACES, forty-six point four percent have family that gives them help and support, often or regularly, whereas seventy-eight point five percent of those that have not experienced these four ACES, report that they have family that gives them support and help when they need it, often or repeatedly. Seventeen percent of youth that have experienced all four of the above ACES, feel that they matter in their community, compared to a rounded fifty-eight percent of youth that have not experienced any of the above ACES. This slide represents middle school depression and suicide. Three hundred thirty-nine, thirty-six point three percent reported feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row, and stopped doing some usual activities. A hundred and sixty-five, seventeen point seven percent reported they had a plan about how they would attempt suicide. Ninety-six, ten point three percent reported attempting suicide in the past twelve months. Thirty-eight, four point four percent, four point one percent, pardon me, reported suicide attempt resulted in an injury, poisoning, or overdose that had to be treated by a doctor or nurse. This slide also focuses on, um, depression and suicide for high school. Three hundred fifty-two, fifty-two point one percent reported feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row, and stopped doing some usual activities. A hundred and thirty-two, nineteen point six percent reported that they had a plan how they would attempt suicide. Seventy-two, ten point seven percent reported attempting suicide in the past twelve months. Twenty-six, three point eight percent reported suicide attempt resulted in an injury, poisoning, or overdose that had to be treated by a doctor or nurse. Summing it up, uh, two thousand twenty-one, depression, suicide, thirty-six point three percent of middle school, and fifty-two point one percent of high school age youth felt depressed in the past twelve months. Seventeen point seven percent of middle school, and nineteen point six percent of high school age youth made a plan on how they would attempt suicide. Ten point three percent of middle school, and ten point seven percent of high school age youth reported attempting suicide, and four point one percent of middle school, three point eight percent of high school age youth that reported attempting suicide, that reported attempting suicide, reported that they needed medical care. As a drug-free communities grantee, the Roanoke Prevention Alliance is focused on continuing the declines in youth alcohol and marijuana use. Next, I will share about the Roanoke Youth Leadership Alliance, RILA, and the projects the youth are currently working on. The Roanoke Youth Leadership Alliance members recently made a Handle With Care presentation and video. The Handle With Care program allows police officers and schools to work together. Anytime a child has experienced any trauma, a police officer is on the scene, they will issue a Handle With Care notice to the school. The Handle With Care notice just states that a child has experienced trauma. This will then allow the schools to provide extra support for that child. The top picture on the screen shows Mackenzie and Jasmeera Leach, whom is a RILA member, and she's also an RPA board member, uh, during the making of that promotional video. The last picture on the slide is from the Be A Resilience Champion presentation. This presentation shares how individuals in the community can learn more ways to practice resilience and how to help others build it. We offer this presentation to community members, and we train people how to share it with their organizations. The RILA youth will soon be trained, and we'll be presenting this to groups in the community. We're excited to see what the future holds for our RILA youth members. Every year, we run media campaigns to drive people to startthetalk.org for marijuana, alcohol, and vaping prevention information. On the Start The Talk webpage, parents and people will find many resources, including evidence-based guides on how to initiate and continue conversations with youth. We utilize social media platforms, city bus lines, billboards, PSAs, to educate the community during our annual campaigns, and each fall, we conduct a phone poll to track those results. In addition to addressing youth alcohol and marijuana use, Roanoke Prevention Alliance implements a resiliency collective with drug-free communities funding. This collective impact process kicked off in May two thousand and seventeen, and has developed the shared agenda, which states, "The Roanoke Prevention Alliance Resiliency Collective commits to building upon the resilience of youth, families, and communities in the city of Roanoke." We also run campaigns to educate the public about how they can build resilience in themselves and in others. The Roanoke Prevention Alliance Resiliency Collective is reviewing the two thousand twenty-one Youth Risk Behavior Survey to assess trauma and resilience in Roanoke City youth. This process will assist in the next steps to develop the shared measures of the collective and strategic plans moving forward. And we're landing here on some contact information for Roanoke Prevention Alliance RPA. My name is Christine Gist, I'm the director, I'm available to answer any questions or continue these conversations, um, and we can answer any questions that you all have. Also, at this point, I'm sorry I didn't brief in between.
All right, Councilor McCall.
Thank you both very much for, for this report. I did have a couple of questions on the survey itself, um, and I know this has been, um, an ongoing survey process with Roanoke City Public Schools. What is the length of time that the survey lasts in terms of timeframe, and when you're trying to reach this many students?
Excellent question, and I'm gonna refer to Susan for that answer, if you don't mind. Um, she, she has been involved in the study for many years, and she'll know exactly the window. Pardon, thank you.
So, do you wanna know how long it takes the schools to implement it? How many days, or...
Yeah, I'd like to know both.
It takes them, they usually try to do tenth grade all in one day, twelfth grade all in one day, and that would maybe take a couple of days to get that all done, and same with the middle school. And we do it online, and with using it online, it takes the kids fifteen And we do it online, and with using it online, it takes the kids fifteen, twenty minutes now to complete the whole thing. It used to take a whole class period with paper and pencil.
So this is happening in the classrooms?
Yes.
With the students in tenth through twelfth grade and sixth through eighth grade?
Yes, sixth and eighth, and tenth and twelfth.
And then, what is the lead time that they usually need to get permissions and everything for this to be implemented?
It's an opt-out survey, so parents opt out of their children taking it.
Okay.
And that notification that the survey is made available to parents at least thirty days in advance, so that they can come see it.
So, the notice is given thirty days in advance?
Yes.
For the opt-out, but then the actual survey is implemented over, really, one day?
Probably one day. I mean, there's probably circumstances that pop up in a school where a class can't get it done that day, but they attempt to get it done in the same day.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. In your, I know you track vaping and alcohol use and marijuana. Are you doing any tracking yet of other substances in the survey?
We do have lifetime use of ecstasy, meth, over-the-counter drugs. I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
Any opioids?
The prescription drug question that we do ask, yes, we do have, and that one was in there.
Right, thank you.
And that's, have you ever taken a prescription drug not prescribed to you?
Right.
Is the way that is asked.
Thank you. And then the last question I have is, on the questions around suicide, it's obviously a higher number than any of us want to see.
Correct.
And the feelings of hopelessness are higher. Do we, do we know what, when people are considering suicide, what they're using, what method? Is that, is there any determinant in that?
When it's just considered, it's really just the youth are telling us that they have considered in the past twelve months, so we don't have any of that data.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Anybody else?
Ms. Bestbitch?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank all of you for helping us get a better understanding of where we are as a community, and looks like we have made progress in some areas, which is good, that means what you're doing, I think, is getting across to students and families. When we talk about commitment to building upon the resilience of youth, families, and communities, what do you see is the most important thing that we don't have, or we're not able to do at this point, that would really help to address so many of the needs that you've identified through the surveys?
I think, sorry, I'm still standing here. I think the number one thing that we saw from that ACEs data, adverse childhood experiences and our protective factors, the things that we're missing are families being more supportive. When kids are going through, or a family is going through a rough time, that is a hard time for a family to be supportive, and I totally understand that, recognize that, but providing some of those additional supports to families so that they can be more supportive of their youth. And then the other is where we scored low, whether you had had the ACE or not, was with feeling like you're connected to your community, and that your community respects you, or can't remember exactly how it was asked, but those are the two things that we saw in that data that really need the focus.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. You know, a lot of times we hear people saying that there's nothing for these young people to do. They don't feel connected to their community because there's nothing to do. And then you get to graduation ceremonies or other events, and you find out all the things that some students have been involved in throughout their high school, and even going back, starting back in middle school years, they've been doing a lot, which helps them to get connected, feel connected to the community. They're part of the community, they recognize themselves as part of the community because of the activities that they're doing, whether it's through key clubs, or through the NAACP Youth Council, or, you know, any number of organizations like that that really help. So I guess I just, I wonder sometimes how we can help more of these young people understand that there are lots of things for them to do in this community. There are lots of ways for them to get involved and help themselves by helping other people in many situations. I mean, I think that's pretty basic, you know? If you want to help yourself, help other people. You know, the Dalai Lama said, "If you want to be happy, make other people happy." That's, that's pretty basic. So anyway, I just, I know we don't have all the answers here today, and I'm certainly not suggesting that, but I just, I think it's important for us to keep in mind that the more we can get students connected to their community, the better these numbers are going to look, time after time. Thank you again.
All right, Ms. Jeffrey?
Thank you for your presentation this afternoon. My question is, when do, is this an annual survey? When is this survey usually done?
We do it in the odd years, somewhere between January and March of the odd years. February and April of the odd years.
Okay.
So we did it in two thousand twenty-one, we'll do it again in two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. If I can add a suggestion, if possible, I'd be curious to understand the geographical area. I know, I know you can't do a lot of demographics, but some of these questions, I would like to know, especially in different parts of the city, where these, where this information is coming from. I think it's important to kind of understand the neighborhoods, and where these answers are coming from, kind of give a better understanding of what is going on in our communities. If we can kind of get a geographical area of where these questions, of these students are coming from.
In the past, we have used zip codes, but we didn't put it in there this past year, but I'm happy to talk to the schools about their willingness to put zip codes in there.
Yeah, especially some of the, especially some of the decrease in marijuana, and the binging, and the vaping. You know, I have a perception, my perception probably might be bad, but I have a perception, and it would be good to kind of understand what parts of the city and areas where these numbers are. I'm glad they're decreasing, but, you know, just see what areas are they, where they're coming from.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Council? Thank you all so much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the table. Susan, just don't need to do it. Just.
All right, Susan. It should be allowed already, I think, on her side. We need to allow for screen sharing.
That's easy, she's trying to get it there.
Okay. We're trying to let Nicole Holton Jacobs and Alexa Popio be able to share the screen from there in.
Joe, can you hear me?
Yes.
You want me to see if I can share my screen now?
Yeah, go ahead and try.
Can you all see the screen?
Good.
I am ready whenever you are.
Okay. Good.
Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to introduce Nicole Holton Jacobs, who's the team lead for Elite Business Strategies, and Alexa Popio, who is the data analyst. These two will be making the presentation summary of the Roanoke Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment. And just as a background, before I introduce Nicole, this was made possible through funding, through legislation and funding by the General Assembly last year. Roanoke is one of six localities to be asked to complete this community assessment. We were the only community that completed it on time, and we had a very short window to do that, but the other, I think Hampton Roads has also completed theirs, and there are four others that are in process. So I'm grateful to Elite Business Strategies for partnering with us, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, council. On behalf of the president and CEO of Elite Business Strategies, Princess Owlsley, and the Elite Business Strategies staff, it is our privilege to have served alongside the city of Roanoke in this initiative. We were privileged to be the assessment team for the Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment. As Joe indicated, we were brought on, I think, at towards the end of October, with the deadline of completing the assessment by the end of December, and I'm happy to say we achieved that benchmark in this initial baseline community assessment. I'm joined today by Alexa Popio, who is our data analyst, and you will also hear from her in the presentation. So we'll jump right in. As you can see, the community assessment timeline here on this screen, we held our stakeholder kickoff meeting on October twenty-ninth, and then around the first of November, we scheduled meetings and interviews with community leaders, spoke with the youth service providers to get their feedback and input on the actual survey data, the survey questions and everything, and the interview questions that we would be disseminating as part of the assessment. And then we actually launched the survey on November the eighth, and got it out through the websites and other dissemination methods through November eighth to the tenth, and the survey ran through December the tenth. And when I say survey compilation, that involves in-person interviews, online survey responses, and analysis, and participating in other outreach events where we could leverage information for the community assessment. We submitted a draft of the assessment findings on December fifteenth, and the final assessment report on December thirty-first. The assessment methodology, our Alexa and myself and the rest of the team worked with the youth service providers and the Gun Prevention Commission, disseminating the survey through our survey platform, SOGO. There were, using the gang model, community assessment modeled by the Office of Juvenile Justice, Federal Office of Juvenile Justice as a model, we developed surveys specific for, specifically for community leaders, community residents, youth service providing agencies, as well as the student and youth population. So not everyone got the same survey. Your survey was dependent on the group in which you were participating for, and we also made hard copies of the surveys available at the libraries. We attended different community events where we disseminated the survey as well. We created scannable QR codes to make accessing the surveys easier. The surveys were also available, as you can see, in Spanish, and Haitian Creole, Arabic, Bosnian, Chinese, French, as well as English, and it was easily accessible from cell phones and tablets, as well as computers. We conducted interviews throughout the assessment period, not, starting in the beginning in November, up until December the tenth. We enlisted the support and participation of Roanoke Public Schools in sharing the survey through their communication channels, and they sent some emails out to all of the parents, notifying them of the surveys, and making it available to the parents and the students, as well as the city posted information about the surveys on its websites with links to the surveys and the QR codes. There was an article that we published so that the community at large would know about the survey, and the reason behind the survey, and to enlist their participation in the assessment. And a lot of our youth serving agencies also assisted with disseminating and marketing the survey, and utilizing their social media platforms to let it, let their audiences know about the assessment, and made the survey available through their links and the QR codes available, to encourage as much community participation as possible. Every day, from Monday through Friday, we, the assessment team convened at Melrose Branch Library. I want to give a shout out to the staff over at Melrose Branch Library for being so hospitable, and hosting us there, where we conducted interviews, either by video teleconference or in person, if it was allowable, to, during the assessment period. So that kind of served as our headquarters. We wanted to be in close proximity to as many of the youth and their parents as possible. That wasn't the only library that we frequented, but that was where our base of operations more so was. We also visited and acquired data from Goodwill, from Raleigh Court, from Eureka Park, and Wasena Park. And another helpful tool in conducting the assessment was leveraging some of the community events that were scheduled by the city, that we had our team members to have a table there, walk around in the crowd, and, you know, talk to people about the assessment, and even demonstrate how they could get their phones and scan the QR codes that would take them to the surveys, to make it as accessible and easy to find as possible. We attended, some of the team members attended church services when they were invited, working with Chris Roberts, and Mr. Cobb, and some of the other city personnel, that we can find out good locations to go and visit, to talk with, the staff and the kids wherever they were convening, to try to get the information out there and conduct interviews. And we, Elite, also conducted three outreach events, where we were supported by the city in providing incentives for the kids to take the surveys, these outreach events, you know, we fed them pizza, you know, you got to feed kids, you can't, you know, expect them to sit there and do something and not always give them something in exchange. So we would give them pizza nights and make a little fun trivia game out of it, and gave them swag bags, and this was done with support from the city. So the baseline goal for each of the survey audiences was set between sixty and seventy-five. We felt like that was a good number. In order to achieve a good baseline, with this being the first assessment that's done, and these are the final numbers, that from the time we launched November the eighth through December the tenth, these were the final numbers that came in. So as you can see, we exceeded the baseline goal that we set for each of the survey types. So now, we're going to talk about the assessment findings, and I will turn it over to Alexa Popio, who is our data analyst.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. All right, if you can get to the next slide for me, please. All right, so we're going to start off with the youth and student surveys, and if you have a question anytime, feel free to give me a pause. So for the youth and student survey, we successfully reached the population whose experiences and perspectives are critical.
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. All right, if you can get to the next slide for me, please. All right, so we're going to start off with the youth and student surveys. And if you have a question anytime, feel free to give me a pause. So for the youth and student survey, we successfully reached a population whose experiences and perspectives are critical to understanding youth and gang violence in Roanoke. So of the 247 youth participants, 58% were between the ages of 14 and 17, which are the primary ages for gang recruitment. Since it was one of the things that we started to collect responses from youth who were disproportionately impacted by gun violence, who has been from the northwest quadrant? Pardon?
They're having trouble hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Try again.
How about this?
Yeah, it sounds better.
Is that good?
Yeah, go ahead.
Joe, I think it is something she had. She looked, she had.
Oh, it's her. Okay, try again.
Sorry, yeah, there's construction at my place, so I thought a microphone will be better.
That's better.
That's better.
So for the... Okay. So where was I? Since it was one of the goals of the survey to collect responses from youth who have been disproportionately impacted by gun violence, participants from the northwest quadrant of Roanoke accounted for 52% of the youth and student surveys. You can see that in the middle graph available. You can see that 52% were from the northwest region, with the rest in the second most prominent was the southwest. And then we can see it split about evenly between the southeast and the northeast. Our next slide, please, Mr. Moore. All right. So while we did not reach as many youth involved in gang culture as we would have liked, the responses from those who did show their thoughts will help contextualize responses from other participants and help build a foundation for expanding our future studies. So you can see at the top of the graph, are you currently a member of the gang? The vast majority of students reported no or whether safe or whether they ever belonged to a gang. So we didn't reach that many involved in gang culture, but we still have a good baseline for asking questions next year when we expand the study. Next slide, please. All right. So based on the responses from the participants, while gang violence at school is not prevalent, it is present. 15% of respondents admitted to at least one instance of gang-related fights, attacks, or violence at their school within the last six months, with 57% of respondents reporting no such instances and 4% claiming that such acts occurred almost every day. It is possible that a significant proportion of such acts take place on the school property and thus would not be reported on or notified by the participants. Additionally, it is also important to note that while actual acts of violence may not be widespread, the effects of such actions can have a greater impact on the student's sense of security at school and mental well-being that are not captured in the current version of the survey. So we know that violent acts that take place on school property can even have impacts on nearby schools where such events do not take place. So that is important to consider that the effects of the violent events are far more widespread than the actual violence itself. Next slide, please. All right. So while participants reported that, on average, 29% of gangs in their schools engaged in different types of violent and criminal activities. So you can see here that's damage or destruction of property, selling illegal drugs, stealing cars, robbing other people. Their primary activity was protection. 43% of participants agreed that gangs in their school protected one another. These results are supported by the few current gang members who did participate in the survey. Four of the nine, so 44%, did agree that protection was one of their gang's main activities. Next slide, please. So going on to why the students would get into joining a gang. Aside from protection, the few gang members from the survey reported being motivated by money, entertainment, and social bonds. So when we're looking at disrupting gang recruitment and gang culture, it's important to know that those are the main motivators and to provide healthy alternatives. Next slide, please. Just about 50% of all participants agreed that it was easy for someone their age to get a hold of a gun, with 28% agreeing with the statement and 21% strongly agreeing. So there's overall a sense that gun access is very easy for their peers to get a hold of. 26% of participants either agreed or strongly agreed with the statement, fights are common in my neighborhood. And 34% agreed or strongly agreed that gangs cause most of the violence in the community. So there is a strong awareness of gang culture and the violent effects that are on student and youth participants. Next slide, please. Most respondents would inform their parents or another authority if in a violent situation or approached by a gang. 19% would instead inform a peer, so either a friend or a sibling. And importantly, 15% of respondents said they would inform no one. While only 2% of respondents chose a teacher to report to, overall, students do feel positively towards school teachers and staff. Most participants agreed that teachers or staff, there were teachers and staff they could talk to, ones who would listen and ones that respected them. So that is a positive avenue for strengthening that bond and making it so that students may feel more likely to go to students or other teachers or staff if they're in front of a violent situation. Next slide, please. Participants, sorry. Participants were generally positive towards the solutions the survey proposed to prevent gang activity. But the three most popular choices to receive favorable votes were more jobs for young people at 85% approval, more activities for you to do after school, and free and individual counseling at schools or community agencies at 79% approval. These solutions reflect the main motivations for gang activity identified previously, money, entertainment, and social bonds. These results suggest that gang culture for these participants provide both emotional and material fulfillment. They gain a sense of belonging and closeness as well as potential security and financial freedom. Attempts to draw youth and students away from gang culture will have to vote a simple rating of the alternative sources for the benefits of gang membership. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, for the few participants already in gangs, recreation and sports are given as the least motivating reason for leaving their gang. Obtaining a job was ranked higher, and vice pressure from family members was also the reason most frequently listed that would get them to leave their gang. So while providing these opportunities might be great for, I guarantee, getting rid of minimizing gang recruitment, it might not provide the best solution for those who are already involved in gangs. Next slide, please. All right, so before we move on to community residents, did anyone have any questions? All right, so then we'll...
I think you're good to go on.
Then we'll move on to community residents. So of the 522 participants for the community resident survey, 69% were identified as white or Asian, and 62% identified as female. 16% identified as black or African-American, and 32% identified as male. 37% of participants were from the southwest quadrant of the city, and 32% were from the northern quadrant of the city. Overall, residents do feel less safe in the community. 85% of respondents disagreed that they felt safer in their community now versus two years prior. 87% of community residents believe that gangs exist in the community, and 60% believe they're active. Pardon?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Next slide, please. Gang activity was the most voted on concern for the community, followed by other violent crimes, drugs, and destruction of property. Among the other concerns, this was caught up, so they were able to write in on the survey if a concern they had was not addressed, included affordable housing, homelessness, lack of opportunities for youth, and gun violence in particular. And we'll see how this was also reflected in community leader results, as well as those of youth serving agencies. Next slide, please. Poverty was voted on as the leading factor in creating gang culture, followed by family issues and a desire for power. So those are what the community residents see as the major motivators for gang involvement. Next slide, please. So I know this one's a little messy to look at. Sorry, there's just not a brilliant way to present it. But when it comes to the organizations the most responsible for dealing with gangs, police and family are ranked most highly, followed by the criminal justice system. But those organizations associated with the alleviation of poverty, service providers, offices of community services, and the housing authority are ranked much lower. So you can see that in contrast to poverty being the leading scene for gang recruitment. So the perceived causes of gang culture are evenly split between the family and the personal levels. In comparison to students, a smaller percentage of residents considered protection as a primary motivation for gang membership. Under other, residents also suggested that drug use and trade and lack of legal punishment and policing were primary causes. Many respondents in the right-hand sections expressed a general leave-on-crime perspective when it came to local government and criminal justice. Next slide, please. As for what things that residents should be done about gangs and gang activity and community mentoring was the most popular solution, with 345 votes, followed by more police protection, job provision and training, and then programs and recreation. All of those about the same level, between 290 votes and 282 votes. So pretty evenly split. The last two are very similar to the solutions voted favorably by the youth and students. And it should be noted that many of the respondents who chose other wrote in more personal approaches, calling for greater criminalization and harsher punishments. So that was not an option in this survey, but it was an option that a lot of people wrote in. Next slide, please. All right, any questions before I move on to community leaders? All right. So the next few seconds are quite short because overall, community leaders agree with residents considering the presence of gangs and increasing community safety. So you can see here, do you feel safer in the community than you did two years ago? 85% state no. And do you believe gangs are a problem in your community? We can see here that 88% also agree with their problem. Next slide, please. All right. They also had the same concerns as community residents when it came to regarding gangs causing conflict, violence, and drugs, as well as additional concerns of overgeneralized advice, just fear in the community. So general tension, general conflict in the community. Next slide, please. They also share similar opinions on what should be done about gangs with residents while supporting new laws and ordinances and greater parental involvement for youth. Next slide, please. And then finally, come to the youth serving agencies. Overall, they had the similar feelings of safety and responses about increased gang activity. Responses from youth serving agencies agreed with community residents' opinions. In the comments, they did express more concern with greater issues in the community as related to sort of generalized violence. In particular, youth serving participants emphasized the lack of accessible activities for youth. And one respondent in particular said lack of options for building a sense of belonging outside of school. Because Joe is more familiar with the resources of Roanoke, I'm going to pass it over to him to talk about the options for youth in the community.
Well, one of the things that we've heard in the previous report, that desired sense of connection and something that Councilman Vespich mentioned, there seems to be a disconnect between what activities are available for youth in the community and how they're benefiting or accessing them. And one of the things that our new Youth and Gang Violence Coordinator, Chris Roberts, is fond of saying because he's seeing it every day, is that Roanoke is rich in resources. We have a lot of resources. Where we struggle is connecting those resources with the people who need them the most. And so that's kind of an ongoing challenge for us as a community. And that's something that I think was revealed in this assessment. And so one of the things we have to focus on is how do we connect the youth and families who need this additional support with the resources that we have and make sure that there aren't barriers that exist to accessing those resources? Thanks, Alexa.
Of course. Thank you, Joe. So going back to responses from the youth serving agencies, when they sat down, we also did interviews with them. And during the interviews, service providers brought up additional issues they were concerned about homelessness, lack of transportation, lack of mental health care. And these are key issues that they were concerned about, both independent and related to violence. And another interesting observation one service provider had was that youth violence was not only focused on gang activity, but he saw the main issue as people, kids using violence as a solution to end personal conflict, which suggests that a generalized survey should also focus on interpersonal conflict between youth outside of organized gang culture. Another common sentiment that was expressed by youth service providers as a problem in the community was a lack of trust between the community members, the government, and the police. Many of the recommendations were given, different methods of trying to resolve that trust problem. The methods proposed in response to the question, what do you think the justice system, police, prosecutors, courts, could do differently to respond to the public safety problem you've mentioned, well into roughly two camps, a more adversarial approach and a more reformist one. Though some responses did include elements of both. The reformers suggest making the police presence more prevalent and punishment for violent pressure. The reformist approach included diversity and trauma-focused training for youth officers, community policing, treatment centers for youth and drug crimes rather than imprisonment, and need performance to the criminal justice system to confront systemic racism. None of the responses stated any desire to defund the police, but they see the police and greater criminal justice system have a more intimate understanding of the relationships with the communities they serve, particularly disenfranchised black communities. Yeah, you can just see more there. So that would be the end of my section, and I'm going to turn it back to Nicole.
Alexa, can I just pause here for one minute? One thing that I don't recall if you brought this up, but one of the findings that's in the extended summary is that the youth surveyed identified a growing concern in violence in teen dating relationships.
Yes, that was a concern. I think about when students were asked about general violence in the community, about 48% I can get, I'm not too kind to report it, that they believe teen dating violence to be a concern. Teen dating violence is an overlooked problem. There isn't a lot of teaching and training that students are given to recognize at least in relationships. And having those healthy boundaries learned and taught early in their life sets them up for greater and safer relationships in the future. So that was one point teens were concerned about. And I can get the particular data point for you.
Okay. So I wanted to, that's a lot of numbers and data and percentages and everything. So to wrap up the presentation, we felt like it was important to also highlight some of the personal interactions and interactions that stood out. So I'm calling this next phase of the presentation the "human element." And these are the humans that worked on the assessment team that you can see here, not pictured, but was seen on the screen is Alexa. And there was also our survey manager, Chuck Cahy, who we affectionately call the Cloud because he's always there, but we never see him. So we called him the Cloud. But these are the assessment team members. So while the data summarized, you know, the results from the questionnaires and the interviews and everything, we wanted to also provide you with some of the lasting impressions and some of the insight that the interactions yielded. So I asked the assessment team members to share in their own words some of their most impactful stories. I chose this picture for this slide because this was at our beloved Melrose Branch Library. Now, that assessor there, that's Gifredo. That's the room that we were using to, like, for our headquarters. And on the table, you see swag materials and bags of goodies and everything that were donated from... donated from the library, some of the city libraries, to help us with incentivizing the kids and kind of giving them takeaways and some, we gave them snacks and everything. So I wanted to include that in the presentation. Gifredo Granger, the interaction that stood out to him the most, in his words, was that there was a time, one instance when they were pictured, when they had something going on at Melrose Library, there was an event going on there, and he was trying to engage as many of the adults as possible to explain what the surveys were all about. And as he was making his way around the library, he heard a commotion coming from the teen area. And some of the teens were playing around the computers and everything. So he went to talk with the young man that seemed like he was the leader of the pack, he was the most outspoken one, and talked to him first before talking to the others. And he expected there to be opposition, he said, to his request. But to his surprise, that leader of the little group there was very receptive to the survey and provided insight into other programs and initiatives that he thought, that he shared, that he thought would help in curbing some of the gang activity and gun violence. And after, you know, he was finished talking with Gifredo, Gifredo offered him one of the swag bags, and he said that he didn't need anything. He was more concerned about change actually happening. And then he went out and recruited seven of his friends to take the survey also, and he explained the purpose for the surveys. And he monitored their responses and made sure that they, you know, filled them out as completely as they could. And he took ownership of the survey in order enough to influence his peers to take it also. And Gifredo said in his statement, he, and I'm going to quote him, "He said, 'From that experience, I realized that gun violence affects everyone and not just adults. Youth are hurting and just want a healthy outlet to express their frustration with the fear of being injured or killed due to gun violence. They want a sense of community and camaraderie amongst their peers.'" He said, "Of all of the encounters with the youth, that was the experience that had, that was the most memorable and for good reason." Another one of our assessors, Sharon Moore, most impactful interaction that she had was at the Stomp the Violence event that was held, where they were able to directly interact with community members who had experienced personal, who had personal experience with gun violence. And while she was there, she met a young man who gave an account of how he was shot. He admitted that he had no prior gang affiliations, but associated with people from time to time who may have had those connections. And his story was that after, one evening after he was leaving the store with his brother, he and his brother were victims of a drive-by shooting. While his brother tragically lost his life, he was severely injured and transported to the hospital. And as you can see from the pictures, he lost a finger, and he was shot in the leg and the hand and the back. He was survived, but was left with trauma and emotional scars from that day. So he was very happy to hear about the assessment and offer his support in anything that we needed him to do. And he asked that we take these pictures and share it with other kids in hopes that it would deter any thoughts of being involved with gangs or with guns. The interaction that stood out the most to me was actually our final outreach event that we did at Raleigh Court Library. We had planned another day of a trivia with the gift cards and the prizes and the pizza. And we had flip chart paper up on the wall, as you can see in the back there, where kids were writing down, you know, some of the things they would like to see in the community and some of the things that they think would be helpful in curbing some of the gun violence and the gang activity. And we put them, the surveys, out on tables so that they could complete them. There was a table near the front, the picture, actually the picture on the right, where we had been given instructions to one of the older kids there. The group of young men were about sixteen and seventeen years old. And as some of their friends came in to join and take the survey, one of them said, "I'm just going to put, I don't know, down the line." So the young man at the front table, that was closest to me, turned around and told them that they were lame to do that and that they should take it seriously. And then they actually proceeded to have a real discussion about their answers. And the prizes and the gift cards and the swag bags were no longer the motivation. They liked the fact that we had explained to them that their participation in it actually gave them a voice to some of the things that could be done to help. So in that way, they felt like they had ownership in the process. Also, that very same evening, the picture on the right, I mean, on the left, is of Sharon, the assessor, while she was facilitating and talking with the kids in the trivia game, trivia game. And one of them was, had been there for the second time and was so impressed with her that they asked, she asked if Sharon would actually be her mentor so that she could, you know, one day go out and do some of the same things that we were doing. And they actually went back and asked the supervisor there on site if we could come back, you know, or if we would be allowed to come back and do things like this on a regular basis. And he asked them why they felt like they wanted us to come back. And he said, "It felt good to them to feel like they had some say-so in what was actually going to happen." And a lot of these kids came back and brought the bags back. They didn't even, you know, a lot of them saying, "Okay, you can keep the bag, we'll just," they ate the pizza, of course, but you know, that's what we wanted them to do. We gave them water. But it really wasn't about them taking anything away from it. So that was really evident to me, that including them and giving them a voice in the decision-making was something that they could respond to and value. These are some other pictures from our time there at the outreach events. The group in the back still having the discussion, filling out the surveys and writing their notes on the wall. These are some pictures of some of the comments that we captured from them. These were also reflected in the data results that Alexa spoke of. We took all of this into account. We also took the opportunity to leverage, like I said earlier, some of the other existing community events. This was the Hands of Hope Thanksgiving Food Drive that was already planned and scheduled. And we took this as an opportunity to put flyers in each and every one of the bags about the assessment. And the flyers contain the links and the QR codes to the surveys. And it was also an opportunity for our team members to talk with the community residents there and get out their phones and scan the QR codes. And they were really, it was really positive and a really impactful interaction for us as assessment team members. The picture on the top right and in the middle was from Ascena Park, I believe. This was another unscheduled event, that opportunity that came up, that we had an opportunity to go there and spend some time with the kids there. That also garnered a lot of input from them and get some of the student and youth surveys completed. The trivia game was a big hit. And also, we found out that the kids really loved Chick-fil-A. I included this picture because, this is Gifredo, he's actually dancing. And he wasn't dancing because it was our last outreach event, and we were, you know, getting the swag bags ready for the last event. It was, he was playing Christmas music, and he was, you know, trying to get us in the Christmas spirit and lift our spirits and everything. Because although we were, our time was in and on the project, it was also to lift our spirits. Because during the course of the assessment, we lost a very valuable member of our assessment team. Greg McLean G. was one of the first assessment team members that we asked to serve on this assessment team. And we asked him to serve on it because he had personal experience with gang violence and gun violence. He'd actually lost a son and two nephews. So this was something that was very personal to him, and he was very passionate about it. And we had worked with him on a project earlier, as you can see the picture on the left, that's him and the former governor, where he made friends with them at some event. He was just that kind of person. Walk up to you, and he never did meet a stranger. So this was all very personal to him, and he was in love with Roanoke. So much so that he used to joke about leaving Texas and moving to Roanoke. And he visited local churches and local businesses and youth service providers to conduct interviews. And he even made sure that he disseminated the survey for as long as he was humanly able to do so. Greg volunteered to stay in Roanoke and not go home for Thanksgiving so that he can take every opportunity to get the survey out there. And the day after Thanksgiving, he went into the hospital, and I have confirmed, I know for a fact, that he was asking doctors and nurses and orderlies and everybody to scan the QR code and take the survey. He loved this work and this community. We could include his testimonial in the presentation. Unfortunately, his untimely passing did not allow for that. But his mark was indelibly made on the assessment team and the assessment, and neither would have been successful without him. Here's our contact information, and we, as always, are at your service pending any questions. That's all I have.
Is that the presentation? Questions from members of the council? Let me ask, go ahead, Mr. Vespich.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you really asked some great questions in this survey, and you provided some really good information to help us get a better understanding of what people in our community are thinking from a variety of different perspectives. There is one that I'm just not sure I understand, and I just wanted to see if you might give some consideration to it. For example, on Slide 26, one of the questions for youth-serving agencies was, "Do you feel safer in your community than you did two years ago?" And eighty-five percent said no. So there might be an assumption that eighty-five percent of people feel less safe. But the other question on that same page is, "Do you feel that gang activity is increasing, decreasing, or staying about the same level among the youth that you serve?" So I think if the other question had been asked in the same way, "Do you feel safer, less safe, or about the same as you did two years ago?", the pie chart might look quite different. You know, I feel pretty safe in my community, but I know I'm not totally safe. So I would say, you know, on a scale of one to 10, where 10 is the safest, I'm probably eight point five or nine. But two years ago, I would have said the same thing. So I don't feel safer, but I don't feel any less safe than I was before. So I just thought I would ask you to give that some consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Let me ask a question. Are there any recommendations coming from this? Can you, are you all making any recommendations to us? First of all, a question I say is, through your survey and through your discuss talks with the people in the community, how do you see us connecting resources to those people that need it? Any recommendation or assessment? Did you make any recommendations on that? You know, I heard that, and I heard issues, but what do we need to do as a governing body or the city to connect people to the resources that apparently is felt that we have?
Well, I can say that I'm still amused to run it. I'm not too familiar with how the city works, but I can tell you that there was a lot of agreement among the students and the community and those few members who did who were affiliated with gangs, that more job opportunities was a major concern, as if there was a recommendation. One of those was, you know, making sure there were more opportunities for those youth to have jobs, find employment, and other ones, major ones was free counseling or accessible counseling for those young students and that there were loads of activities for after school. And I know that earlier you were saying that we have these resources that Roanoke's community is resource-rich, but there seems to be a mismatch between the community resources that are available and getting those resources out to students. So it seems like, at least to me, one of the primary concerns would be, okay, what can we do to make it so the resources we do already have, make them more accessible already, do further studies to find out why they're not connected with our residents?
I'd also like to, I'm having trouble. During, over the interviews and across a lot of the community resident survey respondents, that transportation seemed to be a topic that kept reoccurring in talking to community members. That it might not have been like for, for as youth and students, opportunities for jobs and mentoring and everything, where what they saw, the main topic, one of the main topics, issues that came up amongst the community residents was, yes, they knew that there were resources out there. Yes, they knew that there were places that had these resources, but they had trouble with, sometimes with transportation, getting to them or them being offered in a location that they could access.
Mr. Mayor, I think in response to your question, one of the key things is communication and how we communicate out the resources that are available in multiple ways. And I think we, as a local government, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, the work we're doing through the Violence Prevention Framework, we need to be more direct and thorough in our communications to making sure that people who need access to the services have access to them and not be afraid to over-communicate that. We heard this morning on the Housing Authority that one of their challenges for their youth in their community is transportation to work. Whether it's a lack of transportation in their home, or the vehicles are being used by other family members to get to work at different shifts, that's part of the concern. So the assessment actually is a tool for us to do two things, to evaluate the initiatives that we currently have in place and determine whether they are aligning with what we heard in the assessment, or to create new initiatives and recommendations that we turn into action that align more directly. So part of the work of the commission now that we've got this assessment completed is to take the learnings from this and apply those either as evidence to what we're already doing to support them or to create new programs and initiatives, but to make sure that all of these are in partnership with existing agencies in the community.
Well, I guess, and maybe now may not be the time for me to still absorb this because I'm, you know, I just left a two reporters today talking about gun violence and young people getting killed. And we talk about communication and transportation, which are there, but at what point do we have to make this happen? People are getting killed out here. I'm just concerned with, we need an action plan now to do something. If we, people got jobs, we got jobs out here. We talk about them, had them last summer. Well, let's get them to the jobs. Let's take a bus, let's do something. I just think we need to be much more aggressive because time is not on our side. Time's not on our side. We're losing people. We're losing young people, adults routinely, you know, finding bodies here, finding bodies there. This is urgency, which I, and this is my feeling, where we almost look This is urgency uh, which I, then this is my feeling where we almost looking at a, at a crisis here. And I know that this problem is something that's societal, but I, I, I'm just looking for fixes. How can we fix it and fix it as soon as we can? And when I hear about communication and, well, we gotta, we gotta tweak up our communication. Uh, we gotta, I thought we were doing that. I, I've seen things going on, I thought we were doing that and transportation. Those are things that we, we, that are within our ability to fix. Guess that's what I'm saying. We can fix that. If that's a, if that solves it, but it's apparent to me that looking at, at this assessment, the people are telling us what's the concern are these young people or the people that they interviewed. It gains, gains. And now we can talk and, and, and do those things and we're, we're doing some good assessments. But I, I just think we're getting to the, to the point where I'm concerned and, and one thing that seems to be happening that really I hope we not get there, people seem to be getting immune to this. It's immune to, okay, we expect this to happen. We're taking that now. That, that's my feeling, I'm saying that. And I, I just think that we've got to do more fixes. We got to go out and if we identify what the issues are, then let's go, let's go to work on it. Let, let be a priority. We talk about budgets and this morning and things. Let's, this be a priority, those have to be a priority because people are dying. Two to three every other week, if not every week. And, and, and I think on our watch, we got to be more aggressive. We got to be more aggressive because we're losing people out in the community. And, and, and some people are just getting to be immune, said, okay, we're gonna lose it. So many people are dying. We've got to be more aggressive. We got to find a way. That's incumbent upon us as a governing body. We just can't keep coming with studies and plans. What are we doing? What's your action? To try to save lives. I know it's a tough challenge, it's up here, but we in those kinds of times, probably every governing body across the country is dealing with the same issues to a degree. So that's the challenge I see. And we identified this, we got to go to work and make that a priority with what we're doing with our budget and everything. Make that a priority because it's costing, not doing it is costing us lives. Those are my thoughts. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, Mayor, I agree with you. I also know that we have twenty initiatives that we're doing that are prevention and intervention-based in the community. Um, a lot of this work is longer term. I wish there was a simple solution. One of the challenges is and realities is that people are choosing to resolve their conflicts by picking up guns and shooting each other and killing each other. And if there is a way that we can stop that, if we can know that in advance, that we can interrupt it, then let's do it. But that's going to be incumbent on the community. On people who know something is happening to be able to stop it, to be able to report it, to call the police, to engage our law enforcement. They, they're ready to make these arrests. They're ready to strategically stop these things before they happen. But we as a community have to do it as well. And if we're not willing to take our responsibility in this, then we aren't going to see change.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I mean, are we taking our responsibility? That, that's my point. Uh, as a community, as a public, are we doing it? Are we, as a council, being direct enough to the citizens to say, this is what you need to do? If we need to get more, if we need to get out there more, if we need to send more, deal with communication better? We need transportation is what I'm hearing, those are the things that, 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 that we need to deal with. Whatever it is, we need, we as a governing body need to deal with it urgently, urgently.
Well, Mayor, I think a, a good example of that is that came through the assessment was, I'll, I'll just pick on jobs as an example. It was one of the items that you heard reported out was the need for additional jobs. So um, one of the things we've been doing here in the city is, so we've got um, a collection of apprenticeships. So we've got folks who are actually connected through some of these resources. I'll, I'll use one. We have one individual that has, in effect, escaped from a gang in another community who has been connected to mentoring services that you're providing through tax dollars, through the programs that we have. That person is also now employed by the city through our apprenticeship program. So we can employ seven, eight, I think we have a seven, five, five youth going through the program right now and seven more in line. That's what we can do. There's a lot of employers in the city that we would also hope would join in that effort as well. But that, that's just one example. Those folks are provided transportation to and from through Valley Metro. They're provided transportation to and from those apprenticeships. We've got a whole host of mentors that have gone through training and that you all have provided the funding for, um, to provide that training. And so we're, those mentors are there to mentor the youth that actually, Christopher and his work, as well as the reset team, are connecting those individuals to. So there's a lot of action that's accompanying this piece on the preventative side, or at least the longer-term preventative side. And of course, you all already know the work is going on at the law enforcement side as well. The partnership with US Marshals Office and others. Um, unfortunately, much of that, of course, is in reaction to something that has occurred. And so then they are aggressively doing what they can in making the arrests that hopefully remove that threat from, from the community. But, so those are some of the things. I mean, this, I, I don't want to leave the impression that the assessments that were just talked about are, are the only thing that's going on in the community. Those are a part of what's going on in the community. And the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, I think, felt like this assessment was a way to get a little more data behind the actions that are, have been going on for months and that are still going to go on going forward. Um, the, you all through the advisory panel just identified, just dedicated a million dollars of ARPA funding to go toward the initiatives that will address these things. Everything from overtime for police officers to more lighting, to more cameras, to mentoring programs and so on. That's a million dollars that this community has put forward through your actions to do that. Um, again, I think if the question really is, what else can the community do? That needs to be the question. What else can the community do? Those are the steps you're taking right now in order to try to address this issue as best as you, as you can at this point. Um, but it's going to take, as, as it's been said, it's going to take everyone working toward this.
I agree with you and thank you for saying those things, Cal. What I think we need to do is we need to make that clarion call to businesses. Uh, they need to help. They need to get involved. I, we try to say some things about this at our uh, State of the Cities address. We talk about that. We talk about crime. And it's just not to, to inform it, but we talk about, it's going to take everybody. It's going to take the businesses. You just can't be concerned because it's happening over there. And it's just not, it's just get rid of, we're doing what we can. We've done some things. We're going to continue to work on it. Uh, uh, and so business, community, churches, we, I, I'm tired of having meetings with ministers, but nothing comes out of it. Everybody wants to meet with us and, and any of us will meet with them anytime and tell them what we do. But it's not something that the Commonwealth attorney, I've said this, it's nothing that the police can do by itself, I've said that. But we need to put some action behind it. Uh, you know, the next time I see a group of preachers, I want to know what their action plan is. Well, what's your action plan? Don't come tell me, well, man, I know you can talk to your parishioners, but what, get your parishioners together. Get some of your buses and vans and go take some of these kids somewhere. We got jobs, we'll find jobs, let's do it. But what's an action plan? Uh, uh, not meeting. Man, I, I'm meeting the deaf. Yeah, damn, I turn around, I'm meeting, but I mean, we got to do something, the meetings are well. But we got to put some action behind it. And so that's what we're making that call to the ministers, churches. We're making that call to businesses. And, and I appreciate what they did with the gun buybacks. Some citizens that come forward and Ray got some money, they did the grocery uh, gun buyback and grocery cars. But I'm just saying, I just feel a sense of urgency. And as the city manager stated, we're doing what we can. We're, we're, we are, uh, jobs, we're bringing people on, we're doing what we can do. But the city, it's going to take all of us. It's going to take all of us. And if you're satisfied with what you're seeing each week, then just keep having meetings. But let's do some things. Let's do some things here. And, and like I'm saying, if I'm going to go out to another meeting with preachers, I want to know what their action plan, prepare an action plan to tell us, tell, or tell me how they can help. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jeffrey?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with your comments um, a hundred percent. One of the things that I realized when I, when you did this assessment, when I looked on page twenty-five, it talked about uh, what should we do to reduce gun, the gang problem in the community? And what's, what I see, not only does we talk about job training, but I think we need to talk about the core of it, which is the parents of the children. Um, we, and that's something that I haven't really seen in our community, is that what are we communicating and what strategy are we targeting? The parents that are being involved, having them in the conversations as well as these action steps. Because that, to me, seems, that's sound like that's the foundation of what's going on, is really communicating with the parents and understanding that their children are dying out in the community. And I, I'm, I'm asking, kind of asking that question. Hopefully I can get some type of answer of what type of resources are we doing? What kind of communication are we doing directed toward the, it sounds like to me, which is the core, which is the parents that are in our community with the children? I, I, I'm, I am asking that question, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, one of the, one of the strategies that we've adopted is working with our agencies in the community that already have relationships with youth and their families and their parents. Family Service Roanoke Valley, Weston Center, Boys and Girls Club. Those are just a few. And supporting programs that they're doing. Um, the Prevention Commission is adopting and creating a, a ten-segment video series that we want to make available to parents to not only encourage them and offer them support, but it's something that they can just upload, they can watch themselves, and we'll have support from these community-serving agencies. Uh, we want to continue to offer intervention-based programs that support the work that the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team is doing. Not only through efforts currently at William Fleming High School, but also at Noel C. Taylor Academy. Uh, it's not just reaching the students who are in those schools, but also reaching their parents. And so part of the strategy is to make sure that we're connecting those dots.
Yeah. I, and that, that's great work. I think we need to really focus on the core. To me, I think the core is the home of the, of the, of the children, which is the parents who are supposed to be our leaders in our home. And I think we need to have a little bit more conversations of how we need to understand why it's important for them to communicate the reasons why there's gun violence is, is through the parents. That's just my opinion. But I think we need to do a little bit more stronger efforts in bridging directly, not through the programs, through the children, but directly to the parents themselves.
In, in a flash, say something, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Jeffrey, because I did talk to Mr. Roberts and he is trying to engage parents more. I know that he has asked our sorority, he has asked other community organizations. So at some point, maybe your organization will get asked too, but he has, he did contact us. And we're trying to figure out a way.
You're talking about the fraternities.
Uh, yes, yes, sororities, fraternities, um, anybody, any organization, churches. I think that is a focus for him right now is to engage the parents because we realize that that is um, some of the core of, of our problems. And I know that efforts are being made and I agree with everything that the mayor said. We have to do something. But I also agree with Mr. Cobb that it has to be a community effort. And I do know that we're trying to engage um, the parents at this point.
Well, and I think if you reflect back on the presentation, the briefing that preceded this one, those protective factors, the things that seem to be yielding success, the strongest ones were actually those, the strongly engaged families. I mean, that, that played a significant role in that piece. And even though it's through the youth, all of those programs that we mentioned, that whether they're mentoring programs or whether they're, you know, go-to the, the job programs we have or any of those, all of those have to involve the parents because we can't actually engage with any of that youth without that involvement. So at least that collection has at least that much involvement. But in fairness, again, we're talking about ten, fifteen, twenty kids in that. So I mean, it's a, it's a much bigger undertaking that's necessary, again, in the whole community.
I, I just wanted to put names with faces because they're here, so you all know. And I, and I want to ask Chris Roberts, who's our Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, to just maybe respond to Mr. Jeffrey's question and Council Vice Mayor White Boyd's comments. And then Antonio Stovall is also here. Antonio, would you stand up for me?
Chris, you'll probably turn the mic.
Yeah, this is our, our team that's uh, doing some very direct work.
I agree and good afternoon, council. I agree with the mayor said, as well as uh, Councilman Jeffrey and uh, Ms. Trish White Ward as well. Um, that is our focus, is to get at the root. And the fruit, we see what that's producing already. So we want to dig down to the root to figure out exactly where are the parenting slack, parents and skills at, where they're lacking at? And how do we fill those gaps? Put people in seats, um, in front of people to teach them and build those type of skill sets to raise their kids, to be able to have tough conversations, to be able to redirect, have courageous conversations with a juvenile or a teenager that's doing some things that are not savory to them, you know? So that we want to build there as well. Not only with the juvenile, but we definitely want to build the home. So we're looking at it from a top-down, bottom-up perspective when we're looking about servicing the family and building a community as a holistic, as a holistic goal is our view. Healing the community as a whole, not so much from, just from the bottom up, but from the top down as well. All the clients that we work with currently as we're speaking, um, we're talking to the parents as well, trying to assess and gauge where their skill sets are right along with the young person that we're working with. To see exactly, how do we fill the gaps and make this household strong? And so, again, from a top-down to bottom-up, you know? If the parenting has some communication skills, some poor communication skills, how do we improve those skills where they can have courageous conversations and call their child to account in a respectful manner? You know, especially when you've already adultized them at nine, you got to have a different type of conversation, you know, with this young person to be able to guide them through some troubling situations. So that's kind of how, that's exactly, we feel we have to deal with the root as well as dealing with the fruit and kind of heal our community from a holistic point of view.
Well, I, I appreciate.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask.
Oh, well, I appreciate that, that what you've done so far and I've seen some good things about it. But I, I think we've hit where we are and parents got to be parents. Parents have to be parents. You have to be parents. And if you know, you want to know what I mean by that, uh, we can have those discussions. But parents got to be parents here in terms of what we're doing. And uh, that's, that's just a fact. Everybody's being called out and I think we're doing what we have to do. And as a governing body, I'm just, it just hurts me. I assume it hurts everybody to be doing these things. And I just get tired of these vigils and things that we had last night. I don't know what the circumstances are because I guess weekend, this weekend activity is still being investigated. I don't know who, what, I know who, but I don't know what started that and how all that happened. I got my suspicions, but I can't go, I can't focus on that. But I, I know you and others and we're tired of vigils. We're tired of funerals. Uh, people who are teenagers losing their lives, censorship over gun. And something I think when it all boils down to it, uh, we'll see how sensitive that, 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 that thing was Saturday night and you got some people who are struggling now. We're not out the woods on that yet. So it's in a hospital, there could be more than just one. Uh, but parents have got to be parents. And we can push it out there, we can do what we can, but as Mr. Jeffrey says, parents got to be parents now. Not parents because your name is on the birth certificate, but parents that take charge. Parents got to be parents, not, well, go too far on this, but they, they got to be parents. So I understand that and so, uh, you know, and this council is committed. All of the things that you see Councilman Cobb doing, the work he's putting forth in it, we're committed and we're, we're working at that to do what we can do. But it's going to have to take. I like to get us a good, parents being parents. Then we got our police that's doing what they can. We got a gang specialist here that's doing what he can, meeting with preachers. I want to know how that's going because I just think that that's. I wanna know how that's going, because I just think that that, to me, that's just, I think there could be more. I'm saying it, not everybody else, 'cause I know you all run for office and everything, but so, I'm just saying, I think they could do more. And I want to see an action plan from them that's gonna do more. They could do more than helping us with the thing, even at their church. You know, a lot of these churches got gyms, and we could have basketball, and I can go on and on with that list. We could go on and on. But as everybody in, when we say everybody's in, everybody's in. Everybody's in. Let's get in. Let's go with it. The things we can do, don't become immune to what we see every, just about every weekend over here, somebody being shot, or especially some youngster, but anybody for that matter, don't become immune to it, where it doesn't bother anymore. You can go on about your daily routine, and go on out to the play, and go on out to the dinner hall, a blip, that's another blip on the screen, just keep moving. Somebody's child is gone. And that troubled me. That really troubled me. So, thank you, and thank you for what you're doing. Thank Mr. Cobb for what he's done and continue to do. And I'm not, he and I, I'm not, we're just frustrated, just like a husband and wife, man. Sometimes I'm, we need to pay these bills and get that straight, man. So, that's what we're doing. And so, thank you for your commitment, because we all feel it. We all feel that hurt. We all want answers, and that's what we're searching for, what we can do to make this thing better. Mr. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Roberts, just one question. When you talked about you are engaging the parents, what is your initial responses so far? I know this is ongoing work, but what are the initial responses you're getting as far as barriers that they're not getting the message, or are they getting the message? Or what has been the feedback regarding that, as we're dealing with this?
Sure. In route, and as we're going through the community to find and get close to those actual gang members and those people perpetrating crime, we're running to victims. And we're running to victims who have suffered great loss through gun violence. And so, as we're in those homes, they're very, they're open and receptive to us bringing in counselors, to us bringing in grief counseling, or individual counseling, or trauma counseling. They're very receptive, and happy that we're there. Conversations just flow, people walk in, or just sit on the couch, they're glad we're there. And so, the work that we're doing out there is, people are receptive, and people are starting to generate a lot of buzz and wanting to help. Even some of the parents that we're serving are saying, look, what can I do? Do I need to talk to other parents to tell them, can we have circle-ups, to tell them the resources that we have here, to encourage them to reach out, to be more vocal, to take ownership of their block, their neighborhood, their community? So, people, I think, are very, very thirsty and excited to get the parents in order to come together. They just need to know where to meet up at and where to go, and I think you'll see our community move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, if there are no more questions, we have to move on. Let's get right into the day. No more questions. Thank you all, thank you for the presentation. And, Ms. Cobb, is anything else on this already we need to, briefing that we need to discuss before we get back to the regular agenda?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. All right. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back and go back to the agenda. Thank you. Five minutes. And we'll go to items recommended for action. Item number one is acceptance of the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant to support the purchase of an all-terrain vehicle for specialty team response, excuse me, and special events. Now, the resolution?
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph, please?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant for the purchase of an all-terrain vehicle by the Runaway Fire EMS Department, authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Is there any discussion among members of council? Question, Mr. Bespin?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question for the city manager. Is this an example of one of the things I was talking about earlier today, about something that isn't in the budget, but this is extra money?
Correct.
Yeah, this is the sort of thing I'm talking about. If we can get a summary of that at the end of the fiscal year, this is not a great deal of money.
Right.
But we get a number of these, they start adding up, and some of them are quite a bit more money than this one, so...
The item you'll do next is an example of an $8 million item that was not in the budget.
There you go. So, I think we need to make sure we find a way to get that word out to people a little more.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, Madam Clerk, call it over, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passed. Thank you.
And I should've said this when you asked the question, I definitely wanna thank Firehouse Subs Foundation for doing this. You know, when you go into the restaurant, you know that they make these kinds of donations. This is an example of what those dollars go towards. I certainly wanna thank them for their help with this, so...
That's great. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Bespin, for your thoughts and comments on that this morning. There's a budget ordinance.
Budget ordinance?
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation to support the purchase of an all-terrain vehicle, emergency medical services, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2022 through 2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions from council?
I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's just, I just wanna be clear on it. Are we in the fiscal year 2022, 2023, or is it 2021, 2022?
21, 22 is our fiscal year we're currently in.
But this budget ordinance is saying 2022, 2023. Is that correct? I don't want it to have to come back, and we have to re-adopt. I don't want it to have to come back, and we have to re-adopt. Because I'm thinking this year, this fiscal year, and not the upcoming fiscal year.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says FY '22 down at the bottom.
So, is that incorrect?
Yeah.
Yeah, FY '22 is the correct year. I'm just wanting to make certain that the 2022, 2023 it refers to isn't a, an object code, but instead of fiscal year.
And the reason why I also say it, because on each budget ordinance going forward, it is going to say 2022, 2023. And if that's the case, we're going to have scribbler arrows all the way through unless we amend as we go.
Yeah, you're right, because I see the Civic Facilities Fund.
Yeah.
Says that, yeah, I don't know why those.
Because I'm thinking it's an error personally, but I could be wrong.
You're right, I looked ahead to the next one, so they should read 2021, 2022.
They're all going to say 2022, 2023. So, I think it's a typographical error in there.
Yep.
So, with that said, I would like to amend the motion to, go ahead, sir.
One quick thing. I am glad to run real quickly to finance and make sure that we get.
Go make sure, yes. If you don't mind, but I'm thinking, because I look back and I've seen them.
We'd rather get it right.
Yes, I'd rather be right going forward than to come back.
Yeah, because the fact that it's on the next ordinance as well.
Yes, on all the, all the ordinance going forward.
Yeah, leading to believe that that's a per.
And that's why I wanted to ask the question on this one, to see before.
You talking about the next item?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's on all the, all the notices.
Yeah, when you look at the ordinance for the next item, it has that same, so it's not a code. And I don't, I don't know any reason why it would be in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, because we haven't even gotten there yet. Because I saw it all the way up to seven, eight, seven, seventy-five, seventy-six, yeah, seventy-six. It's only four. It's only two.
It's probably correct, though, because it seems like it would be for the next fiscal year, then I can maybe get this one right by July 11th.
It's usually adopted during the same fiscal year, then.
Yeah, I don't think you do. Because we wouldn't, we wouldn't typically appropriate into a future year. You've got to appropriate into the current year.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, my guess is, my guess is whoever prepared the ordinance picked it up the first time.
Thank you.
Went from there.
Just call me little Miss Bespin, just.
You think so?
These things are good, Miss Suti, I'm simply a classic. They are good.
What is good?
I think we all have some, no?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't know, I've eaten them. I ate my other one.
I just polished off.
I like it with the chocolate in it, yeah. A little snack.
He married him.
Oh, he was that, okay.
Somebody who'll actually know the answer.
We want them in both.
Yes.
So, it's both?
Now, let's say.
I'm sorry?
We want them in both, so we actually want them in 21, 22, and 22, 23 budget.
So, we are going to start spending them in FY '22 and finish spending them in FY '21. So, that's why it has the 2022 to 2023.
And not as if it is a fiscal year.
It is the, the grant term.
Okay.
Okay. So, they are right as written?
Yeah.
And that's how the grants usually.
Okay, I understand that, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we ready to, ready to move on with this?
But let me ask one more. Now, only capital improvement ones, is that the same, too?
It generally can be the same thing, because those are multi-year candidates.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So, they start in the fiscal year and go to the next fiscal year. So, they're starting in 2022, and they're going to run through fiscal year 2023.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Really appreciate it.
Definitely, I'm just going to see how to.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll follow along on this one. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two is the acceptance of the shuttered venues operators grant from the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance to provide support to live venue operators in response to the impact of COVID-19. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the shuttered venue operators grant established by the Economic Aid to Hard Hit Small Businesses, Nonprofits, and Venues Act, and amended by the American Rescue Plan Act made to the city of Roanoke by the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? So, members of council, questions?
I was just going to explain again what this is. It may be the last time I have to explain this. This has been fortunate that I've got to explain this now for a fourth time, which is, this is a grant application that our folks over at the Civic Center have sought and applied for out of, really came out of the ARPA Act, but a separate category of it. And so, this one is for another almost two million dollars that will go to the Civic Center, which means, in total, we've received eight million dollars under this program, and it's a grant. And to Mr. Bespin's point, obviously, we had not budgeted for these dollars. Now, in fairness, this is because we had budgeted for revenues that we didn't actually receive, because the Civic Center wasn't open. But this certainly is dollars that we would have otherwise not had. And so, the grant program, we believe this is probably the final award that will be possible under this program, and we have, we only have basically to the end of this year to spend it. So, it's going to move very quickly as we go forward and stuff, and we'll, we'll start sharing more information about what those dollars can be spent on as we go along. But another, another good opportunity, almost two million dollars coming through this grant program.
So, Mr. But, Mr. Cobb, you did say later on you want to tell us how, because I know that they had, that was my question, when, when does it have to be spent? I know they're doing a lot of stuff, a lot of exciting stuff, but how long, you know, by the, they've got to do it all by the end of this year?
Yeah, they're sort of scrambling to identify what, what it is for.
By the end of this fiscal year.
It's the end of the fiscal year, and so, some of it will be used for marketing, some of it will be used actually. We often co-produce events where we have to pay a share of the event that comes here, and then hopefully recover it through ticket sales. We'll use some of it for those, those opportunities. So, they're actually working on that list now of how they'll expend these dollars.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. They got a lot of stuff coming here in Roanoke.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on this resolution?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Economic Aid to Hard Hit Business, Nonprofits, and Venues Act amended by the American Rescue Plan Act, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 Civic Cent, Civic Facilities Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Members of council, any questions or discussion? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, call it over, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget passes. Thank you. Item number three is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation's Surface Transportation Block Grant and Highway Infrastructure Program Funds to the Roanoke River Greenway East Design. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of Surface Transportation Block and Highway Infrastructure Program Grant established by the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Roanoke River Greenway East Design, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any discussion from members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation and Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, amending and reordaining cer, certain sections of the 2022, 2023 Capital Projects Fund Appropriations.
Thank you. Any discussion among council? Seeing, Madam Clerk, please call it over.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number four is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation's Highway Infrastructure Program Regional Surface Transportation Block Grant and Smart Scale Fund for the Aviation Drive/Valley View Boulevard Pedestrian Improvements. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph, please?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of Regional Surface Transportation Grant, a Highway Improvement Grant, and Smart Scale Grant established by the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Aviation Drive/Valley View Boulevard Pedestrian Improvements Design, Right-of-Way Acquisition and Construction, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any discussion among members of council? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I have a question for the city manager. It's with regards to, I understand where the sidewalk ends across from Smokey Bones, but I'm trying to envision where it's going to go to get to Herschberger Road.
Yeah, and Luke, you want to, you want to cover that? Because I, I was pulling up the aerial photo to look for the same, same reason. While Luke's coming up here, I'll, I'll share, really, these, this project and the one that you just approved or accepted are both grant projects that, when all is said and done, the state will be providing in the regional planning organization, eight million dollars for greenway and pedestrian improvements. And again, there's no local match in either of these, so these are funds that are coming in to, to address both of these areas. And Luke, I'm sure will be able to show us.
Yeah, I'm going. Get back to pull it up here.
Of course, it's always at the bottom.
There it is.
Mm-hmm.
There's all these, so, heavens.
Yeah?
I got a dinner date tonight.
Good for you.
It ain't what you think. It's with my son.
He will get you a good steak if nothing else.
Yeah. Well, I probably won't, because I'm a, I'm a luxury. He don't want that. You know how you got to do those guys in purple and gold every now and then?
There you go.
Get a little too far out.
Here we go.
Hey, get a little too far out. You got to put a rope on it, pull it back.
Clarence over there laughing.
Did he hear that? Oh.
Okay.
Basically, the project starts at the center section right here, which is, this is the Chick-fil-A, and this is the Smokey Bones. So, if I'm looking toward the airport, going toward the airport, the improvements are on the left side of the road. So, as you wind your way past Smokey Bones here, you go past the tire place. So, the sidewalk will go past right here, and then it'll go over to the Dick's Sporting Goods area on this side of the road, and come up behind Dick's Sporting Goods, and then it'll come over across, this is the Shakers Restaurant right here.
Right, intersection.
So, it'll keep going there, and then it'll work its way all the way to the airport, but it'll also.
I was going to say to the underpass.
So, right there, right there, where you have the, the entrance coming off of Herschberger Road. They will be crossing right there, right?
We're going to put in a pedestrian crossing here with flashing lights.
Oh.
And then we'll also connect it up to Herschberger Road.
So, they'll be able to walk?
So, they'll be able to walk, if you're walking on Herschberger Road right here, you'll be able to walk this part here.
Following the traffic?
Following the traffic.
Going, going with the traffic, okay.
So, we'll connect it to Herschberger Road, and then connect it up to the airport.
Okay.
Entrance.
Keep going right there.
Yeah.
Man, right there, under the Herschberger overpass, when you're coming, and you have the exit, where you're coming off of Valley View going up to Herschberger, what will you be doing right there?
The exit coming off, so.
Right in there, right where you're at, go on, go on over. Keep going right in there, keep going, eh, keep going, right there.
Right there. We'll also put in a pedestrian crossing with flashing lights. So, we'll have the lights indicating for the folks coming from the airport to get back on that exit. It'd be very similar to a lot of the crossings along Herschberger. We'll have the ADA accessibility, and then the flashing lights. That way, it'll give the motorists enough time to see folks.
I hope so.
So, yeah.
I hope so.
We've got to engineer that out, and make sure we provide the right accommodations, and make sure those folks are visible. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about this area right here.
And they'll have more than they have today, which is nothing.
Yes, because traffic is two-way, you know, you're going under Herschberger to loop around to go, what is that, going toward Frishtown Manor, where you loop to go, and then you got the one that goes, I don't know, my east, my going west. So, you're going west, and then if you look around, you're going east. So, that's where I'm thinking, right in there.
And this is the intersection that you're concerned with, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that goes on down to the bridge.
Mm-hmm, that's it, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, that's certainly something.
Or you can merge off or go straight. It's where they get kind of crazy.
Where they pick up speed.
Yes, it's where they get crazy, yeah.
Sure. So, yeah, the, and then the sidewalk accommodations.
Okay.
Will tie in with the, the.
All the way to the, to the light at Aviation and with Town Square?
Right.
Okay.
So, and then we'll have a pedestrian crossing that goes across here, and then ties in with this pedestrian crossing.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That helps me have understanding, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Are there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call it over.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. All right, there's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation and Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 Capital Projects Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please call it over.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number five is the acceptance of the Section 106 Supplemental Disaster Funding Grant from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality to support the purchase of a new street sweeper. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing acceptance of Section 106 Supplemental Disaster Funding Grant established by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for the purchase of a new street sweeper, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Are there any discussion from members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, call it over, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Does a budget ordinance? Second. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph, please?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Department of Environmental Equality, Section 106 Supplemental Disaster Fund, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 Storm Water Utility Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among council members? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please hold the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number 60D appropriation of the Virginia Department of Transportation Regional Surface Transportation Program Funds for the Roanoke River Greenway-Barnhart Creek Bridge Crossing. There is a budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to unappropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Roanoke River Greenway-Barnhart Creek Bridge, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 Capital Projects Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among council members?
Just to give a little bit of explanation on this, so, much like the one, the grants we just have received, in this case, this was a grant that we had received for construction of, designing and construction of a project. That project was completed under the estimate and therefore under the grant that was awarded. And under the program, you have to return the remaining dollars. So there's seventy-one thousand dollars out of the nearly eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project that gets returned back to the state so they can reappropriate it for other programs like this. So that's, that's what this action is doing.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any further discussions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number seven, the adoption of the emergency operations plan for the city of Roanoke. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution re-adopting an emergency operations plan for the city of Roanoke.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. Item number eight is acquisition of real property rights in fee simple in connection with the city of Roanoke Flood Plan Mitigation Project. There's a ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property identified as nineteen-oh-three Meadowbrook Road Northwest, tax map number six-one-four-oh-seven-oh-seven, needed by the city in connection with a flood plain mitigation project, authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute appropriate acquisition documents, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion among members of council? All right, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. I'm pleased at this time to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank you. Mayor, council, I'm gonna be really, really brief, although I do have to just acknowledge since we're on a theme here, I think, today, Mr. Best Pitch, since you had mentioned this earlier. But all of those items we just acted on were actually in that category that you had inquired about earlier, which is, all of those were grants that were received from various state and federal agencies, which initially we had not included in our, our budget and helps us stretch those dollars further. And, you know, in total, just those actions represented well over seventeen million dollars worth of investments coming into the community, so just wanted to, to mention that. You all have at your place a draft copy of the strategic plan. We will, at your next meeting, I'll have a presentation and be seeking adoption of the plan, so it asks that you read it. Obviously, you know from the retreats that we had, there's not a huge amount of change from last strategic plan to this one, but you'll note in there that the demographics have been updated to reflect current, current demographics, as well in several of the different specific action steps. Obviously, things that were still going on for reopening have been removed, and other items have been added that you're currently working on. So that's, those represent kind of the largest changes in that as well. Once you have a chance to look at it, if you have any questions, certainly let me know. And again, it'll be at your next meeting that we actually go through this in a little more detail and then seek, seek adoption of it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions amongst council? Thank you. Item number eight is reports of committees. We have none. Number nine is unfinished business. There is none. Item number ten is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. None. Item number eleven is motion and miscellaneous businesses, inquiries and or comments by the mayor and or members of city council. Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Mayor, I just have three, three quick things, and Bob, I think we could talk about these to a greater degree later, but I just wanted to highlight them. I had a conversation with a local convenience store operator yesterday who's, who shared concerns of a recent shoplifting incident that was captured on film. I don't know how many convenience stores are seeing an uptick in this, but he remarked that he's seen a significant uptick in the last year. And I just wanted to make sure that we have some things in place to deal with that or follow up with it. The second thing has to do with the, the reusable bags. The same convenience store operator shared that a lot of the EBT people coming in have no idea what, that they have access to bags. He's educating them. But I just wanted to make sure that we are reaching as many people as possible with reusable bags, and if we need to amplify our education or outreach to them, that we do that. And this, again, I think would be a great way to partner with some of our convenience stores to do that outreach work, because they can also help, they know who their EBT customers are. So it, it makes sense if we can do that to do it. The last thing is, I wanted to just make a couple recommendations. I, I know that the current ordinance that we have for snow removal says that snow needs to be removed in front of properties and sidewalks by nine o'clock the next morning. I think that is calling for a miracle. I don't know how long it's been since that ordinance has been reviewed or evaluated, and it's difficult to enforce these things. But as, I'd like to just see if there's a way we can review that. And then also, since likely some things have changed in infrastructure since that ordinance was written, we now have a lot of bike lanes that if, that are getting covered up. And so whether it's pedestrians who can't access sidewalks or bikes, they're coming in more to the flow of traffic, and it's creating higher risk. And then I want to make sure that our school properties are also getting their sidewalks cleared off. And lastly, that when we do the snow removal, if there's a way that we can make sure that it doesn't get piled up in front of crosswalks and accessible entry points for wheelchairs. And, and this last snow was really bizarre in a lot of ways because of the mixture of ice and snow and how it stayed. I mean, this snow really stayed a long time because of the really cold temperatures. And I want to commend our street crews. I think they did an extraordinary job. You know, over time, making sure that, that the main corridors were clean. Again, a call to citizens and property owners to, to do our part in this. But if we could just keep some of those things in mind, those were some things I noticed and heard from constituents on.
Yeah, and I think on the, to answer part of your question on the sidewalk ordinance, given the fact that it references that you can place cinders and ashes on it, tells you the age of what it is.
Tells us all we need to know.
It is, though, very common across the entire country. And certainly is true here that the clearing of side, and there was a lot of confusion I saw out there with folks on social media, that the clearing of sidewalks rests with the property owner, be they the business owner or the residents. That is not a city responsibility, unless it's on city property, and then it is a city responsibility. Bike lanes, however, would be the city's responsibility, not the, those are not part of the owners because they're inside the curb, if you will. School sidewalks are the responsibility of the school. So they will, they're responsible for clearing their sidewalks along those areas. Yeah, I'd have to look with the crosswalk piece and those, that could be more challenging. It just depends on where they end up being and how they move the snow as they go through. But yes, all of these, all of these, some of these are part of our debriefing that we go through after the snows anyway. A few of them, like the sidewalk ordinance, would require further conversation with the council about what is appropriate and how do you actually enforce? Part of the challenge is, you know, part of the challenge with those ordinances is enforcing them inevitably ends up having the elderly person who cannot clear their sidewalk. Not enforcing them inevitably ends up with the person who ends up in the street in a dangerous situation because a business didn't clear there. So no one has figured out a perfect way, but our ordinance is obviously dated and, and practical. I mean, the idea that by nine AM after the snow stops, everybody's got their sidewalks cleared or within three hours is not very, not very likely. And therefore is not, not really enforced. What we do is inform folks of what the ordinance requirements are, but rarely, I don't know if we've ever enforced it over the years. Lexington, Virginia, just recently was in the news because they actually issued citations as a part of their ordinance. Now, I don't know what their ordinance, how their ordinance reads, but they, they did recently do some enforcement. And it is dangerous when they're not cleared, but also there are folks who can't clear them.
Yes, like in my neighborhood, there's a lot of older people. They, they, they just don't get clear.
Yeah, and I don't know, and that's part of what you gotta consider when you look at it, ordinance, because the city's not gonna be in a position to clear this. So how do you make certain that they get cleared? But, yeah.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Cobb. It was, it was a difficult snow. There's still lingering around, my goodness, still out there. On a happier note, let me ask the clerk, or have we heard anything about the St. Patrick's Day parade already? If I could put that on my schedule?
No, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, okay.
It's still a go. The Clydesdale, the Clydesdales are supposed to be in town again.
Yeah, the Clydesdales, I saw that.
Okay. And, uh, 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 Mr. Cow, can we, or can we schedule a school board meeting with the council?
Oh, yes, yeah, and I, we haven't checked with them yet, but I wanted to check with you all to see if... The reason, as I understand it, the reason it was scheduled last time on the second meeting of the month instead of the first meeting, and the reason it was given its own time or its own schedule was because of a number of the school board members not being able to attend the meeting during the morning session like we have here. So a question for you all, as we try to coordinate with the schools, is, would you still want it on your, on the second meeting of either this month or next month? Part one. Part two is, do you want to try to schedule a time separate from the rest of the meeting? So like last time, I think it was scheduled an hour before the meeting, or do you want to just do as we did today and incorporate it into your meeting? That really is part of the question, just as we start kind of planning with, with them.
Oh, those.
I would just suggest that we allow enough time. We haven't had a joint meeting in quite a while, and I think this, at least this initial meeting will require more time than an hour. So I, that was my concern about just six to, you know, a little before seven. But if we include it in our regular meeting, then.
What I might suggest, then, if that, if everyone kind of feels the same way, then what I might suggest is that we actually start that joint meeting at six, but not set it to end at seven. If that, if we can figure that out, Tim, with the, with the rest of the agenda, how we could do it. That way that, in effect, we gain an extra hour in the overall meeting, use that first hour with them. We'd have to talk about how we actually then open the seven o'clock meeting and stuff, but if that, if that seems workable for folks, we'll start coordinating with the school board. I say we, but it'll actually be Suzie.
Okay, so it looks like it would be going on the second, the next meeting day in February.
It could either be this next one coming up if they're available, or it'll be the second one in March, depending on their availability.
Okay.
If it's the, if you're looking to change the time, though, for that second meeting, for the seven o'clock meeting, move it back to seven-thirty or eight? That would require, if you follow our normal procedure, adoption of a resolution here, today.
Could we do like we do with the legislative session, which means we would, we would still, in effect, we would start the special meeting with the school board at six?
Whenever it ends immediately.
Yeah, open the meeting at seven, but the first item on the seven o'clock meeting is actually the continuation of that discussion, could we do?
We could do something of that nature.
I mean, that's what I would think we would try to figure out. Because I don't, I wouldn't want to change it not knowing if the school board can actually attend or not.
Correct. And then the only other issue that we have is, we do have public hearings. That we advertise for the night.
Right, I think what you do is you make the first item on your seven, yeah, I think you'd make your first item on your seven o'clock being the conclusion of the, of the joint meeting of the school board, and then you pick everything else up after that, but I'll work with Tim.
And we could schedule the public hearings within that meeting a little bit later.
Yeah.
Is there not, I mean, is there a reason why we couldn't do it that morning like we did with Roanoke Health?
The indication is, I understood it when Suzie was, when the clerk was actually inquiring of the school board members, most of them were unable to attend a morning meeting. That was, that was the issue.
Okay, well, I don't.
But they attend a morning meeting, more in person.
No, they would be, this next one would be in person. They would have to be in person.
But that's what I'm saying. We, have we not done that in the past in the morning?
We did that last.
Yeah, I don't know if, you know, there's several new board members, but I, I don't know. I just know that's what they had informed the clerk of.
I think it, I think it's just too long of a day to try to do that at seven. And then you got to go to public hearing. I, I would suggest in the morning if they can't, they, they've always been in the morning.
Yeah, ideally, our briefings and our joint meetings take place like the one did today. So we, we can start there if they're available.
I think that's where we should start. That's the way it's been in the past. I don't know what has changed since the last time we had one.
And that, if that were the case, that would be your first meeting in March, is what that would.
Well, let's see if we can do it first week in March, if we can. Then we'll just have to improvise. Is that all I worry about?
It works for me.
Okay. And then in that, in that case, if they're able to make it, we would just incorporate that in your nine AM. We wouldn't do anything different, so, okay.
Yeah, that's part of the in on school board.
At school board, man, I tell you. You're not worried about how we feel. Are they comfortable? Thing to change, boy, I tell you, boy. Okay, uh, all right, just, Mrs. Suzie, don't forget now, I, I got some, some new green stuff I want to wear, so keep me up with that St. Patrick's. Okay.
Aunt Ty or something. I never forget something.
All right, is that it on miscellaneous for everybody? All right, certification of closed meeting, and I need a council member to, to make a motion, and we'll clear it up.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
All right, the second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. Cobb or Mr. Best Pitch, who, okay, all right. All right, uh, I'm gonna call on Councilman Best Pitch to put the names, uh, in nomination for appointments or reappointments and, uh, once he's done that, uh, if we're in agreement, we do the, make the normal statement of all nominees. So I'll call on Councilmember Best Pitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Local Office on Aging Advisory Board, the nominee for appointment is Jennifer Oaks. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the nominees for appointment are Rafael Lee and Tim Pollard Thomas, and the nominees for reappointment are S. Terry McGuire, Diane Simmons, Jared Rigby, and Luke Pretty. For the Roanoke Arts Commission, the nominee for appointment is Donna Davis. For the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, the, uh, nomination for appointment is Rachel Hale. For the, uh, Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, the nominee for appointment is Karen Milkowski Carney. And for the Towing Advisory Board. The nominee for appointment is Manuel Dotson, one more. For the, uh, Western Virginia's Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, the nominee for appointment is Tomas Reyes, and for reappointment, W. Brent Robertson.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, once the roll is called, uh, please, uh, vote all nominees if you're in agreement. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye, all nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye, all nominees.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
All nominees.
Mr. Best Pitch?
All nominees.
Mr. Cobb?
All nominees.
Mr. Jeffrey?
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee?
All nominees. Thank you. All right, is there, there being no further business to come before this council, this regular session of Roanoke City Council is hereby adjourned.
You know, both sides have these big military forces facing each other, but then, you know, as you, as we're talking about eighty-nine,